Good afternoon and welcome to today's New York City Council hearing for the Committee on Veterans. If you would like to submit testimony, you may at testimony@council.nyc.gov. If you would like to testify in person, you must fill out a witness slip with one of the sergeant-at-arms in the back of the room. Please silence all electronic devices. Once again, please silence all electronic devices. No one may approach the dais at any time during today's hearing. Chair Holden, we are ready to begin.
Okay, you hear me? Because the light's not going on here. Good afternoon. I am Councilmember Robert Holden, Chair of the Committee on Veterans, and welcome to our Oversight Hearing on Promising Therapies for Veterans' Mental and Emotional Health. Additionally today, the committee will hear two resolutions. Resolution number 440, which I sponsored, calling on the United States House of Representatives to pass, and the U.S. Senate to introduce a pass, uh, and pass a companion bill, and the President to sign a Fair Access to Co-ops for Veterans Act of 2024. The resolution number, and Resolution Number 441, sponsored by Councilmember Christie Marmarado, designating March 29th annually as Vietnam Veterans Day in the city of New York in honor of the bravery and sacrifice of the Americans who served and in recognition of the past and present dedication of their families and caregivers. Now let me call on Councilmember Marmarado to make a brief statement about her resolution.
Thank you, Chair Holden, and members of the Veterans Committee, thank you so much. It's an honor to introduce not only my first resolution, but one that holds a profound significance for the men and women of my district. Today, we vote on a resolution to designate March 29th as Vietnam Veterans Day in New York City. And as I stated at a previous meeting, this resolution was inspired by a heartfelt conversation I had with one of my constituents, Oscar Ruiz, during a Veterans Breakfast in the Mars Park Community Association. Tearfully, Oscar expressed that Vietnam veterans did not receive the welcome and recognition they deserved upon returning home, at least not at our local or municipal level. Designating March 29th as Vietnam Veterans Day in New York City may seem small, but I know it's a meaningful step for our New Yorkers in honoring the service and sacrifice of our Vietnam veterans and their families. I calmly request my colleagues on the Vietnam Committee to support, the Veterans Committee, I'm sorry, to support the resolution so it may proceed to a larger vote of the council. I would also like to thank Regina Paul for crafting this meaningful resolution, thank you, and my Chief of Staff, April Cardena, for the dedication to me and the success of our office. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. And now let me say a few words about my own resolution, which is in support of the federal legislation that would expand the U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs Home Loan Guarantee Program to support the purchase of residential co-ops by eligible veterans, service members, and surviving spouses, in addition to the already allowed purchase of condominiums and houses. Because of the prevalence of co-ops in New York City housing stock, and because co-ops are often, you know, less expensive housing purchases than condominiums and houses, this federal legislation would level the playing field for New York City's past and present service members and make it more possible for them to own their own home in our city. Finally, turning to the topic of today's Oversight Hearing, we will be focused on promising and relatively new therapies aimed at improving mental and emotional health for our veterans. Now, nothing is more important than this, and this is, you know, an ongoing problem since, I guess, World War I and even before that, and we're only now starting to address it. But we hope to hear about a number of those therapies from expert witnesses who work in those fields and who will join us today. And we also look forward to hearing about the therapies that our Department of Veteran Services has supported. The committee report prepared by our staff for this hearing cites a variety of innovative therapies, ranging from outdoor, nature-oriented activities to therapeutic writing to service dogs and puppies in training to equine therapy that is based on caring for and riding horses. Uh, and to the use of psychedelic drugs, to music therapy, to production and performance in creative arts, to yoga, to Habitat for the Humanity, like building and renovating, you know, homes and buildings, carried out by groups of veterans, to the very promising reconsolidation of traumatic memories, RTM therapy. Clearly, there's a lot for all of us to learn. To kick things off, let me introduce a video. We first saw this video at a virtual Vet-to-Vet Cafe workshop held last March and sponsored by the Hospice of Palliative Care Program at MJHS, a not-for-profit healthcare system in New York City. The video illustrates the power of music therapy, and can we roll that video, Sergeant?
With, um, actually a colleague of mine worked with, but I really wanted to show this video. Um, the patient who was, uh, I believe he was a World War II veteran with COPD. He was, um, someone who had been a former tap dancer, and after being admitted to hospice, was so lethargic and not always responsive, but his daughter noted that when he listened to music, he would show a much bigger response than most, than to most things, not really to the TV, just, you know, if she would put on the right music, she noticed that he would kind of perk up and talk a little bit. Um, and so the music therapy department was called in, and we had another, have another video of an intern, um, who was able to help him reconnect to the music of his youth. Um, I just want to note, he lived up in Harlem, and his daughter kind of would note how the Harlem Renaissance provided like a spiritual retrieve almost for veterans coming back, African-American veterans especially. Um, and so the music that we played was from that time. So I can just pull up one more.
The sound is pretty bad, but he's, she's playing music and he's responding to that. The veteran. It's a little hard to see, but. All right, we, you know, I'm gonna, we're gonna cut that a little short because the, I don't know, we're having problems with the sound. The music doesn't, uh, is not coming across. But essentially, there was a veteran who's bedridden, ridden and unresponsive, and he's actually dancing because he was a dancer and he's a musician, and he's responding to it where they got no response before. So this, the music, um, is, could be therapy and has been used. So that was a very good example, except it didn't, you couldn't tell by the, by the video because of the sound. But, um, that was still was remarkable when you see the original video. So at this time, I would like to acknowledge my colleagues who are here, Councilmember Christie Marmarado, and that's it for now, but everybody else is on their way. So I would also like to thank the committee's staff to work very hard to prepare this hearing, for this hearing. Our newest member, John LaRosa, Legislative Counsel. To my right, Regina Paul in the audience, who does a lot of work, our policy analyst, who also wrote the two resolutions we are hearing, and I thank her for that, extra hard work. Ross Goldstein, our financial analyst. And finally, uh, thanks to my Chief of Staff, Daniel Cazina, who's hiding in the wings over there. So I would like to now turn it over to our Legislative Counsel to administer the oath to the witnesses of the administration. Uh, John, would you like to do the honors?
Okay, so we have Commissioner James Hendon, Jason Loren, and Dr. Lauren DeMello. Um, please raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this committee and to respond honestly to council members' questions? Thank you. As a reminder to all of our witnesses, please state your name prior to your testimony for the record.
My name is James W. Hendon. I serve as Commissioner, New York City Department of Veteran Services. Before reading the testimony, I just want to begin out of the gate and say we wholeheartedly support Resolution 440 from the chair as far as the advocacy for passage of the Fair Access to Co-ops in, for Veterans Act, HR 7703. Also, we very much support Resolution 441, which is acknowledging March 29th to be held as Vietnam Veterans Day going forward. Just want to make that very clear. We acknowledge 440 and 441. Anything we can do to be of value to you to push these, please reach out. Just want to say that.
I would hope so. I hope you support it.
Good afternoon, Chair Holden, committee members and advocates, and Councilmember Marmarado. My name is James Hendon. I serve as Commissioner of the New York City Department of Veteran Services, or DVS. I sincerely thank you for taking the time to hold this hearing on promising therapies for veterans' emotional and mental health. I'm joined today by Dr. Lauren DeMello, Executive Director of Mental Health, and Jason Lockren, Senior Advisor for Intergovernmental Affairs. Veterans are some of the toughest individuals I know. They selflessly serve their country and embody the virtues of self-sacrifice and holding oneself to a higher standard. Despite all that U.S. military service members past and present and their families have sacrificed for us, sadly, seeking help for physical ailments and particularly mental health is still something that holds us stigma, especially within military and veteran communities. Here at DVS, we are trying to remove that stigma. DVS passionately serves veterans in the same way that they've served our country, and we strive to provide a spectrum of services and resources to meet the physical and mental needs of the diverse cohort of selfless individuals who decided to sign the dotted line and serve this nation. Health isn't something that involves any one facet. Health is an overlapping system of complex social, environmental, socioeconomic, and individual networks that span a gauntlet of issues ranging from housing insecurity and unemployment to a lack of support networks and social isolation. We work on these issues daily to help alleviate and solve them. Since our last hearing on mental health, we have continued to work and make progress advancing the slew of programs and partnerships that have proved so critical in improving not only mental health, but the life outcomes of veterans across New York City. A big part of this progress is our commitment to providing direct services. From the start of fiscal year 2024 to the present, we've completed 92 Patient Health Questionnaires and 93 Generalized Anxiety Disorder Questionnaires. These optional assessments allow us to assess and refer veterans to mental health services wherever they are in their mental health journeys. The stigma that exists surrounding mental health sometimes prevents veterans from seeking related services. We have created a system whereby we can provide much-needed mental health support even without labeling it as such. Whether our veterans are seeking help with their benefits or assistance with employment, education, heritage-building activities, or housing, DVS has the functionality to serve our constituents at any stage of the process. Our ability to provide tailor-made referrals maximizes the value that we, as a department, bring to the table. By leveraging our relationships with partners, we can punch above our weight class and provide maximum value to veteran and military families. Our partnerships with New York Presbyterian and Black Veterans for Social Justice are two such examples. New York Presbyterian offers two military and family wellness clinics to connect service members with high-quality, evidence-based mental health needs. They operate two clinics, one at Columbia University Medical Center and another at Will Cornell Medical Center. Meanwhile, Black Veterans for Social Justice, or BVSJ's, Suicide Prevention Program is funded through the federal government's Staff Sergeant Parker Gordon Fox Suicide Prevention Program. The Fox Suicide Prevention Program enables the VA, here locally through BVSJ, to provide community-based resources to veterans with the aims of preventing veteran suicide and fostering related community and stakeholder outreach. Among so many other things, it's also important to highlight the Reconsolidation of Traumatic Memories Protocol, commonly called the RTM Protocol. This clinically-proven effort reprograms the neurological connection between the brain and specific traumatic memories. It requires no drugs and is a game changer in the treatment of post-traumatic stress disorder. In the sphere of mental health, we strive to partner with veteran-supported entities, leaders, and organizations in order to facilitate delivery of the most effective and highest-quality services we're capable of in the course of our operations. The following are some of those activities. The Veterans Mental Health Coalition. The Veterans Mental Health Coalition is a group of mental health researchers, advocates, clinicians, and organizations that meet monthly to discuss pressing concerns and evidence-based practices within the world of veterans' mental health. DVS staff proctor and attend these meetings during which we learn about new developments and programs through which we might be able to forge partnerships that can be of value to the broader veteran community. Mission Vet Check. Mission Vet Check was launched in May of 2020. This buddy check wellness call program assists veterans on various topics including food insecurity, housing assistance, mental health, and more. Thus far during the current fiscal year, 14,976 calls have been made to veterans with a 50% answer rate. Approximately 2,000 Mission Vet Check calls resulted in requests for DVS services. These checking calls prove crucial in getting many veterans the help they needed with our agency providing a vital link between veterans and a multitude of services. Military Family Advocacy Program. The Military Family Advocacy Program, which has just concluded its inaugural school year. The 2023-24 year was its pilot year on Staten Island. It's enabled 55 Richmond County-based New York City public schools to participate. Those schools identified more than 200 veteran and military families within the borough. The 55 schools, each of which designated one staff or faculty volunteer, a military family advocate, were able to create and deepen relationships supporting military and veteran families, nurturing the family's diverse and unique needs. Joseph P. Dwyer Pilot Program. One out of four NYC-based active-duty service members, reservists, National Guardsmen, and veterans say they are lonely three or more days per week. Only one-third of lonely respondents feel they have someone they can approach when in need. The PFC Joseph P. Dwyer Peer Support Program is a flagship effort funded by New York State, which advances peer-to-peer support for veterans who struggle with PTSD and other mental health challenges. Veterans have tremendous potential that often requires a little bit of support to untap. We believe in the efficacy of community-driven programs. That was the guiding philosophy behind our launch of the Dwyer Pilot Program. Dwyer has existed in other counties since 2012. After its most recent expansion, DVS became a formal Dwyer program funding recipient during calendar year 2023. We wanted to show the capabilities of the Dwyer program by piloting its expansion in New York City in a hyper-local way. That pilot initiative has proven to be a success. During the course of the pilot, which occurred this past fiscal year, we provided funding towards four different organizations in order for them to create dedicated blocks of time for veterans and their families to participate in classes and activities while being surrounded by other veteran community members. The success of the program, along with the operational and logistical experience we gained through running the program at a smaller scale, will prove invaluable when DVS executes the Dwyer program at a scale, at scale, starting in fiscal year 2025. As far as the Joseph P. Dwyer launch, as the pilot program draws close to its end, we stand ready to take next steps, the next step, towards the full-scale implementation of the Dwyer program. During implementation, DVS will seek requests for proposals from for-profit and nonprofit organizations to support the mission of increasing social engagement and connectivity for U.S. military veterans and their families. We've created a robust methodology for vendor selection, ensuring that we only partner with the very best candidates committed to our goals of reinforcing help-seeking behaviors in our veteran population. Further, we are partnering with a multitude of organizations to expand access to various modality-focused services offered to the veteran community. Currently, these include somatic, animal-assisted, expressive, educational, culinary, and community-oriented programs. One of the most important things any person, including a veteran, can do to combat social isolation is to get out of one's shell, step outside of their comfort zone, and join the community. One of the most underrated aspects of creating and maintaining a positive mental health environment is our connection to one another. That said, we promote many modalities of care to New York City's veteran populace. We aim to pique our veterans' vast and varied interests and create more of these third places that are so sorely needed today. These broad and diverse activities are all part of the wider program to provide mental health services to a population that traditionally shies away from such a critical segment of one's health outcome. While people, especially veterans, might be reluctant to seek traditional forms of mental health treatment, by shifting our emphasis to an activity-focused and community-driven approach, we can expand the number of veterans who engage and benefit from these offerings. Example is data sharing and crisis enabship mapping. DVS maintains more than 120,000 active records and continues to expand this number, speaking of the records of our veterans in the city. Data sharing is a crucial component in measuring and recording the tangible effects that DVS programs have on our veteran constituency. Get Covered NYC Vet. We've partnered with the Mayor's Public Engagement Unit to help veterans obtain health coverage through Get Covered, the Get Covered platform, the New York State of Health, and the VA and TRICARE systems. Too often, veterans fall through the cracks of our healthcare systems, and healthcare enrollment is known as a notoriously confusing process. This program establishes one-on-one support with a covered NYC vet specialist who can assist veterans and their families as they choose the right healthcare options for them, all factoring in civilian and non-civilian healthcare eligibility in line with the benefits that they and their families have earned. We extend our gratitude to the City Council for enacting crucial legislative measures that aim to match veterans and their families with mental health resources. The City Council Mental Health Roadmap Legislation, a dynamic plan that acknowledges evidence-based solutions to enhance mental health outcomes, is instrumental in enabling DVS to concentrate on bolstering prevention services, particularly at the community level. It also plays a significant role in raising public awareness about available programs and the improving inter-agency coordination to ensure a seamless continuum of care. Intro 1237, Collection of Demographic Data. The COVID-19 pandemic has underscored the criticality of data sharing in customizing our support for our veteran communities. By enshrining the transmission of vital information into law, DVS will be empowered to optimize the efficacy of our data collection efforts, thereby enhancing our ability to serve our community more effectively. Intro 1239, Community Outreach on Mental Health Resources. The availability of mental health resources hinges on effective outreach and engagement infrastructure. Intro 1239 highlights this infrastructure need by empowering Vet Connect NYC to continue working towards its goal of connecting veterans and their families with city, state, federal, and nonprofit organizations. Intro 1241, Reporting on Mental Health Services. Continuing with the theme of data collection, Intro 1241 ensures that the reporting of information from agencies that provide mental health services is collected and aggregated to maximize transparency. This information is reported in the form of an annual report. The data collected here is part of our broader efforts aimed at collecting and utilizing data to identify and fill gaps in the current mental healthcare infrastructure. In conclusion, we are grateful for the opportunity given to us today to testify on the topic of mental health. We're happy to answer any questions the committee might have in light of the information that we've presented here today. More information about DVS's mental health offerings and programs can be found at nyc.gov/vetmentalhealth. Say it again, nyc.gov/vetmentalhealth. Any veteran and military family members who are seeking mental health or other services remotely may contact DVS through our Vet Connect NYC platform, which can be visited at nyc.gov/vetconnect. The telephone number for DVS is 212-416-5250. Our email address is connect@veterans.nyc.gov. Our social media handle is @NYCVeterans. One more time to say it's nyc.gov/vetmentalhealth to see the resources. It's nyc.gov/vetconnect to remotely plug in for services. The phone number is 212-416-5250 to call us. Email address is connect@veterans.nyc.gov. Social media handle, @NYCVeterans. Lastly, to all who are here physically and remotely, if you or a loved one is experiencing thoughts of suicide and are in immediate crisis, then please call the Suicide and Crisis Lifeline at 988. Members of the military and veteran community can reach the crisis line by dialing 988, then pressing 1. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And, you know, I'm going to ask you some questions. You touched upon a few in your testimony, but I just would like to get it on the record as some of the answers. But would you include service organizations as therapy? Would you say that's part of the mental health of veterans, our service organizations?
Absolutely. Connection. Anything that gets to the N state of our people.
Which is, yeah, which is, I think, you know, many people don't recognize that, but keeping our service organizations going, keeping the buildings themselves, you know, funded, is a goal of this committee. Uh, and many of the council members have several in their districts. I have probably a dozen locations, and, but they're all, many of them are in trouble. And it's so important that veterans talk to their colleagues because they can identify with them. And, and they, so they, you don't see loneliness at the service organization. So that's why it's important. It's hard, it's, you know, talking to the leaders of the service organizations, they say it's difficult recruiting the younger ones, younger veterans. But that, and that's something that we could help with through funding. And, and that's why I've suggested not only to the mayor's office, but also the Speaker's office to try to fund these organizations. And I think you would agree, Commissioner, that many of them in trouble. We're losing, you know, a few a year, and that's, that's a shame because we're losing the opportunity for, to address mental health. Um, but you mentioned it in your testimony, but the overview on mental health services, um, which ones do you feel are the most effective that you, I don't want to have you pick one or the other, but what's, over your years as Commissioner, what would you say is probably the better, uh, where you're seeing results in the mental health area for veterans?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna defer to Dr. DeMello to take a lot of this. I just want to just say, issue with this question, Mr. Chair, is that we, we don't want to be seen as picking certain winners and losers from a clinical aspect. For us, if an organization is doing right by our people and we vet them and say, okay, these folks are above board, we will make sure that the community knows about them. We do what we can to get the word out. And so we just want to be careful of being in a position where we're seen in the same light as.
So there's not one, and let's say, let's say the clinical area of dealing with post-traumatic stress. There, I mean, that's probably, and again, doctor, you could, you could, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but that seems to be, um, I would say, the most serious because it kind of takes over the veteran's life to some degree and can destroy it also. And many a times, the veteran's suicide rate can be attributed to that. But go ahead if you want to elaborate.
Currently accepted modalities have really high success rates, as well as some of the newer ones that you had mentioned. Promoting one, I would, sorry. To pick one in particular, I wouldn't, I wouldn't.
No, you can pick five. I mean, you can, you can say in the area of PTSD. Let's just, let's focus on that.
There's several. As you mentioned, RTM, RTM has a really high success rate. The Ritting exposure therapy has a really high success rate of reducing symptoms of PTSD. However, because mental health is so unique and individualized, different things work for different people. So to promote one might.
All right, let me, let me, I don't want to promote one, but just say, what area do we need? Let's say, what should we put more funding towards that you feel it could do a lot more good? We could reach more veterans?
In all fairness, counsel, some of these therapies haven't been vetted through like the FDA. You know, they're still going through research testing, so they're on different levels of being promoted to the public. So I couldn't pick one or even a few.
Even to put more money towards? Say all of them.
All of them. All of them.
All right, yes. Well, that's what I would have said, but go ahead.
May I, no, no, go for it.
I just wanted to comment to what Lauren was saying in that as a veteran who went through mental health treatment, you know, sometimes it takes a few different testing experiences and, you know, it all comes down to staff and who you develop a relationship with at that time. So, um, I think there are a handful of organizations that you know about because they're actively involved with us and we see them a lot. And I think, I would say that those folks that are actively involved with speaking to your offices and our offices, I think if we were to tell you which ones are out there that are doing good work, those are the ones that we would reference.
All right. Um, but I'd say thinking outside the box sometimes where we, we, let's say a veteran doesn't want to sit with a psychiatrist, but would love to work with horses or, or animals or, you know, that kind of thing, or music. So that's why, you know, you don't want to pin one down because it's not one size fits all. I get that. But, you know, I do, if we're involved in funding, this is what. But, you know, I do, if we're involved in funding, this is what my question was toward. If we're, where do we need, because I don't want programs like we have that have waiting lists and veterans can't see somebody, you know, that's what I'm trying to get at. What programs might we expand because they've shown a good success rate? And we'll hear expert testimony later and they might be able to elaborate on it. But we need to think about that in funding, like what areas should we really fund? I'd like to fund more service organizations because I know they work. I know they provide a good deal of service and for, not only for the veterans, but for the community. But certainly, you know, expanding areas that would help veterans faster. You know, like I've seen RTM work because I have experience with that, family experience with that, and it did work. And I had, you know, two of my in-laws who went through it and want to live now because they experienced a post-traumatic stress problem. So this is something that I think we need to address. We need to have future hearings on, we need to actually have more conversations on. But we'll go on. And related to that, is the specific outreach that you mentioned, Commissioner? You know, really, what specific outreach programs does DVS have in place to inform veterans citywide about mental health services? Because I know mailings are impossible for your, you know, with the funding you get. So what creative techniques are you using to do outreach? I mean, with the restrictions of your budget?
Thank you for that question, Mr. Chair. A lot of it, and I'll start with a couple of things and, you know, anything that can be added will come from Doc DeMello and from Jason. We, there's what we put through our website as far as nyc.gov/vetmentalhealth, where we have several offerings. We just make that a place where it's basically a site that if you're looking for things that are in this space, and this is something where you need help and support and want to find organizations, we list several things on nyc.gov/vetmentalhealth. Another thing that we do is, it's back to the partnerships piece. We always promote partners. So when we have a partner who has a good offering and we vetted it and it's above board for us to distribute, we are sure to get the word out via social media, leveraging things like, you know, Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, et cetera. Also, we get the word out in our newsletter. So we are sure to, you know, make sure that it's published there. Another thing that we do is we go on offense with our Mission Vet Check program. It's a program where we have volunteers meet once per week and come together and call veterans in our community. It's a Buddy Check Wellness Call program, and that's a remote program. So you can be anywhere, be able to plug into us and be able to dial veterans and reach out. And so that's another way that we try to reach out to folks. Those are just a handful of things we do to get at this between, once again, the website, the social media aspect, the newsletter, and then Mission Vet Check, we physically call to touch base. But I want to defer because there's so much here, just to add.
Just, I want to jump in there because we have some numbers on what the Commissioner just shared that I'd like for you guys to see. And then Mission Vet Check has made over fifteen thousand calls. We've also attended over eighteen community board meetings. And in our social media, we've been able to increase our impressions on Facebook three times the number from fiscal year twenty-two, going from seventy-two thousand to two hundred and thirty-three thousand impressions. On Instagram, we were able to improve that number over the last year by seven times. So as fiscal year twenty-three, we had, I'm sorry, in fiscal year twenty-two, we had five thousand impressions on Instagram. As of fiscal year twenty-four, we've had thirty-four thousand impressions on Instagram. And I understand that that might be viewed as just inputs as far as data that we're moving things forward. But, you know, as far as outcomes go, I'd like to share with you guys that we looked at how many views our mental health and wellness page was getting, so ensuring that we're getting mental health resources and improving the traffic on our website to those resources. And compared to last year, the entire year, we had one thousand six hundred and seventy-nine views of the mental health page. We're only halfway through this year and we're already at thirteen hundred. So we're already well surpassing last year's activity on our mental health and wellness page. So it seems that whatever efforts we are making.
So the outreach is going and you're happy with it?
Yeah.
What about, what about feedback afterwards? Like, you know, getting some feedback as to, are they okay with it? You know, did it work? That kind of thing. That would be a little bit more difficult, but.
It is, a couple of things. One is, you know, we have this tell us how we're doing link, you know, for anybody who's just reaching out. You can see it in my email as far as that's one piece. Another one is, we've been actively following up on these Mission Vet Check referrals too, to kind of close the loop there to get feedback. This is a program where we're bookending this fiscal year with calls this week and next week to kind of close the loop with folks on that aspect of things. Another one when it comes to feedback is just, it's looking at the cases closed within Vet Connect as far as if something was referred to a provider and that provider ultimately closed it. And then last but not least, the survey, the twenty-twenty-four Veteran Military Family Community Survey, which is out right now at nyc.gov/vetsurvey if anyone hasn't taken it. NYC.gov/vetsurvey as a place for us to really get the temperature, the pulse of everyone. In that testimony, I mentioned something about a certain number of our people say they experience loneliness at a certain cadence. We got that from the last survey. And so this is a way for us to really hear our veteran military families and so we can respond and best help.
But that's a high number of how many people are lonely, isn't it? So, you know, given that, you know, are there any, you know, upcoming initiatives or programs that DVS plans to implement to improve mental health support for our veterans?
I'll say a little bit and I'll throw it to Doc on this, I'm sorry, Dr. Mello. We, we've got a lot right now as far as within what we're doing, and I'll let Dr. Mello speak on it. Things I would mention that are expansions, really, it's taking what we've already done and just building upon them in two major ways. And there's everything else. The two would be expansion of the Dwyer program, which we're just looking forward to getting that going in FY25 to really make it available to all who are interested in helping our brothers and sisters, to have them vie for Dwyer funding and us be the conduit of getting that out. And the other one is expansion of our Military Family Advocate Program. There are thousands of things, I want to let Doc, you know, take it from there.
So we're expanding our Military Family Advocate Program from piloting in Staten Island, which we had fifty-five schools participate, reaching two hundred and forty-two families to all boroughs. Every school will be welcome to participate in our MFA program and hopefully we will reach a lot more families.
And then just to double down too, the things that we already do, which we continue to do, it's Crisis Intercept Mapping. It's the Veterans Mental Health Coalition. It's Mission Vet Check. So there are things that we already are doing, but when it comes to expansion, it's very much expanding this Military Family Advocate Program to blanket DOE's catchment area, all of it, not just Staten Island. And it is the Dwyer program, just as opposed to a small pilot saying, hey, look, now we have these resources from the state, let's get it out to all who would compete so we can get more money in the hands of our folks.
Thank you, thanks, Commissioner. I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Maravato to ask some questions. And Councilmember Palladino is here, and so is Joanne, Councilmember Joanne Areola is online on Zoom. Does she have any questions following Maravato? She could just let us know. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Holden. So when treating, thank you for being here today and sitting with us. My question is really, when treating veterans' mental health, what's your opinion on these newer therapies such as like MDMA therapy? I didn't realize that that was actually in practice right now currently.
Yeah, so DVS, sorry. Part of our Veterans Mental Health Coalition, we have a lot of these newer therapies present. We've had low dose lithium, we've had the MDMA psychedelic psychotherapy. We've had several. And I think we wait before we introduce it to our community because several of them are still going through testing. For example, the psychedelic psychotherapy was later rejected by the FDA. So although we're learning about the research and the promising outcomes, I don't think it's ready for, some of them are not ready for dissemination to the public yet.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to also note that through our engagement with those organizations, I would, I always encourage them to go to your offices because as you know and as you see, there are some organizations practicing these methods and these new treatment methods, different than others. And so from the groundwork, I've noticed that some of these organizations have constructive criticism or maybe potential laws that should be in place to construct the future of this, especially at a local level. So I'll be happy to also follow up with those folks that are interested in crafting what should be, you know, regulations and such around those practices with your offices.
Okay, thank you. And as far as, I have a lot of organizations in my district between legions and community associations. How can we get them on board for outreach for veterans with mental health? When I was out campaigning at one point, I had interactions on two different occasions with veterans who didn't even realize we had so many legions within our community. And just to get them out there and get them like repopulated and really involved with these organizations. What do you feel that we should do on our ends within the community to try to really have like a veterans outreach?
Just, and I'll start, if anyone wants to throw in. I think the deeper problem right now is that we don't have enough young blood coming into these VSOs. That's the deeper issue. We're trying to get a handle on that in that we are obtaining the data for those who are getting out. As soon as they come out, we have that information. We have it for, right now, we get twenty percent of those who are coming out, we get their information. We're working to get that up to eighty percent. That's something that involves the federal government and a form someone checks off, et cetera. So about five thousand of the two hundred thousand leave the military, come to New York City. We get about one thousand people's info. And so it's us engaging that group, which we've begun with, and saying, okay, hey, welcome to New York. We'd love to plug you into some of our VSOs. You know, please check here for all you'd like to be introduced to, and then making that connection. And so that, I feel like is a key piece of it, is to get the young talent into the organizations. Beyond that, we're, you know, doing what we can to let our VSOs know and just to put out what we're tracking. We're tracking a hundred and forty active veteran service organizations in this city. And I'll count, call it out, sixteen active that we're tracking, that we're tracking. Sixteen Staten Island, twenty-one Manhattan, twenty-six Bronx, thirty Brooklyn, forty-seven Queens. Once again, sixteen in Staten Island, twenty-one Manhattan, twenty-six Bronx, thirty Brooklyn, forty-seven Queens. And so for us, it's making sure these folks know about things like, hey, you know, here's a council funding opportunity. Let us help you take these steps to apply. So we have that nyc.gov/vetcouncilfunding page as a way to try to get that. We're trying to use Dwyer as another means to get at this as well, saying, hey, look, not just money from the council, but here's money through the Dwyer program, please apply. So we're trying to get a handle on having more traction and synergy. Another piece is the contracting side of it, where, I know last year, we took on our first set of contracts when we're taking another set this coming fiscal year as far as just taking small dollar contracts from veteran service organizations largely towards events so that we've got a direct line of communication with folks. So there's not a world where you're interacting with the city in some way and we're not connected so we can leverage one another. And so these are just a few things we're trying to do to get at this. That's not a perfect answer, but we're trying to drill down on this. And federally, we're really optimistic about a change being made where it goes from being just one thousand out of the five thousand to get at least four thousand out of the five thousand. And that's something that we're working on heavily so we know more folks. And I've been told that this summer will start to receive, right now, when someone leaves the military, the DoD keeps their DD two fourteen in a digital format in a big old Excel file. They can only keep it in that format for thirty-five days in an Excel. So picture an Excel with hundreds of names for New York State and everyone who got out, and all the fields are DD two fourteen fields. They discard it after thirty-five days. We get access to that information now. So that's what we're getting as far as, you know, working to get the info. We'll start to receive later on this summer, TAP program info. So if someone is now saying, hey, within twelve months, I'm leaving the Army, I'm leaving the Navy, the Air Force, et cetera, we'll start getting that. So we'll lean even further ahead as far as being able to put hands on them. And so we're trying to get all these things in a good place. And the last thing, before I forget, you know, we've been signing agreements with our different electives. We signed one, the first one was with Speaker Adams and her team, so that we're able to share the data with the different, you know, city council members. We've also done this with the State Assembly, with the State Senate. We're working this right now with the federal delegation. We did one with the Bronx Borough President, we're working the other Borough Presidents too, so that we can, and the Borough Presidents give us the community boards. So we want to live in a world where you know what we know, specific to your geography, so we can all be in the foxhole trying to get at this together when it comes to reaching out to our brothers and sisters. I'm sorry, just, you know.
And one more thing, I would encourage all of your VSOs to reach out to our office on whatever events or things that they're holding so that we can put in our newsletter. We've got ten thousand subscribers to our newsletter, and so that's a great way for us to amplify what's happening in New York City as a city that is supportive of the veteran community and of the events that are occurring here.
And we definitely have a lot of those events happening in my district on both sides, so I'd be happy to share that information with you.
I consistently get requested is that they wish that there is a place that all of the things that were happening in the city were going to. So we want to double down and please let us know. We'll put it in our newsletter and make sure the rest of the city knows about what your VSOs are doing.
Great.
And we can put it on ourveterans.nyc. We have a partnership with that group too that runs that calendar, which is a calendar of community events. I'm sorry, just wanted to add that.
Great, thank you so much, guys, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember. And Councilmember Vicki Palladino has some questions.
Good afternoon and thank you for coming. We talked about, you spoke about the digital world that you're now in with the, and I'm going to approach this from the young person's standpoint. I'm looking at page three of the information that I received here. And what interested me most was that we have here veterans in the age of eighteen to forty-nine-year-old, age group thirty-three percent compared to the rate, compared to a rate of only eleven percent for veterans, fifty and older. In addition, the Department of Veterans found that veterans under thirty-four and veterans transitioning into civilian life were at a higher risk of suicide. So this is just reiterating what you have already stated. Now, what I'm interested to know is, since we saw, just go over that again if you could with me about the uptick in Instagram and the uptick. This will explain why these younger people now are actually searching for you guys in, you know, on social media.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. And you as councilmembers all, oh, sorry about that, Council. Councilwoman, thank you for the question, and I think you guys all know this fairly well, right? Because you also want to ensure that you're getting out information to your community. So I see all of your social media accounts and the job well done that your team does to operate those social media accounts. And so same goes as ours, is that we've obviously known that we've had to increase the investment in our education and information on those social media accounts. And therefore, so back to the numbers, in fiscal year twenty-two, in Facebook, that year, we had seventy-two thousand impressions. This past fiscal year twenty-two, we've been able to increase that number by three to two hundred and thirty-five thousand impressions. Instagram, fiscal year twenty-two, we had five thousand impressions. Fiscal year twenty-two, we had thirty-four thousand. So those two numbers, just looking at them, one increased three times, the other increased seven times. And then on our actual website, where the intention of all of this is to drive these folks to the pages where this information is readily available and they can engage with it or request our services, right? And so in just six months, we're almost at our total website views for mental health and wellness for the entire calendar year of twenty-two-three. We're just about four hundred views short. So we still, we're going to well exceed the number of views on that mental health and wellness page on our DVS website.
Because I see here opportunities exist to further meet student veterans' mental needs. Now, is there, is there a such place where these young people, the students, is there an organization or a, what do you call it, on the website where they could click specifically that they are students and they are veterans? And it says here that they often go to college soon after entering civilian life, but we want them to self-identify. So we see that sixty-three percent of them are under the age of thirty-four, which is really amazing. And it makes them more susceptible to the mental health issues that we're talking about. We have the anxiety, the stress, the depression, and the suicidal intention. Now, this is VA data that was collected from twenty-seventeen to twenty-two. So I just want to know a little bit more about the student-veteran reach-out. What are we doing with our kids?
So we do have, there's a Veterans on Campus Network, which is basically us having lines of communication with each of the folks who are the leads within the veteran communities at the various schools. And so that's a way for us to touch with that group. We've been working to get a better handle on folks, not just on the student side, but also the family piece. So we've been partnering more heavily with the Blue Star Families too for folks where it's not just about that veterans, about their loved one too. And I'm with you all the way on these things, you know, Councilmember Palladino. I just have to say what burns in my mind is we're trying to get a handle on all of this too because seventy-one percent of our veterans are fifty-five or older. And so, you know, roughly thirty percent of our veterans, thirty-three point three percent of our veterans are Vietnam-era. And so for us, it's trying to handle all of this. I just want to call that out, but I know I completely agree and take your point.
Because I'm concerned about seeing these facilities like our VFWs, which are closing. Cause I'm concerned about seeing these, uh, facilities like our VFWs, which are closing, our American Legions. They need to be filled with these people who are between the ages of, in their 30s and in their 50s. So, because our Vietnam vets are now in their late 70s and early 80s, and we want to keep replenish, uh, replenishing the well. And so that they know what's available to them. And we're back to square one again, as we started the year off with, let's get the knowledge out there, so they know what's available to them. So I think this is all great. And stay on social media, this will be, that's very big.
We will certainly do that. Thank you, Councilwoman. One thing I also want to add to your question about student veterans is that DVS also participates in the VA Work Study Program. And I just want to double down on, uh, council and any organizations, uh, listening, and especially our city partners. Uh, we would help anybody who's interested in learning about that program and getting VA work studies into their institution or organization. It's a great program. I happen to have two Columbia VA Work Study students, and, uh, it's a great way for us to engage with those students, but also create these, um, you know, those, these champions within their own colleges and universities, because when they're working with us and learning about these challenges that we're facing today, um, they bring it back to their institution at their school and their student veterans group, and they share the information. Right, yeah. And their jobs.
And their jobs.
Exactly.
I, it's just a funny thing. I have a girl, she happens to rent from me, she's 34 years old, uh, and she's a Navy vet. And she literally went down to the Whitestone Post 131, and she revitalized that place, one person. It was crazy. It's all older gentlemen, and she's got card games going, and she's got a bunch of stuff going, and they're having a good time.
They better send us that schedule, I'm pretty good at spades. I said, you gotta send us that schedule, because we're pretty good at spades in DVS.
I will do, thank you, thank you very much.
I also, I have to also mention the Skillbridge Program. Uh, Will, do you mind standing up? William here is actually currently active-duty Marine, and he's, uh, got his command to, yeah, please. And this young man took, uh, the initiative to look for educational opportunities and work experience opportunities here in New York City. And he found our, uh, job description on the Skillbridge Program, because we also participate in Skillbridge. And here he is, on active duty still, learning how, he's actually working for me. So, uh, please engage with him on any legislative questions in, uh, in your offices. I'd love for him to learn about the, how New York City politics works, how New York City government works, and how DVS operates. Yeah.
But, but that, but that veterans, um, you mentioned veterans on campus and, uh, Work Study Program. How, could that be expanded? Are we, are we looking at ways to expand that?
I wanted to open up on that too. So with, with, uh, Work Study, the, with Work Study, it has to be work that tie, touches the veteran military communities. And that's something where the VA operates that, where they pay that student who is.
Oh, the VA does that?
Yes, the VA, this is a federal program, but we're a host site, is at DVS. And so what happens there is if a, uh, someone is using Voc Rehab, or using their Post 911, GIAB, or whatever benefits to, if the VA is paying for you to go to school, and you are, uh, get a good partnership with a host site, you get paid money, uh, additional money to, to do that. So that's up to 25 hours, and I think here in New York City, it's up to $20, so per hour tax-free that you receive. So you can have that person while they're in school, interning, but it has to be that they're focusing on veteran-related issues. Skillbridge, meanwhile, is if someone's within their last six months of service, of active-duty service. As long as the first officer of a certain rank signs off, that person can then work either remote, in-person, or hybrid, full-time for you. And so that's why we were so fortunate to have William with us. And so that's one where we're happy to help anyone who would like to get involved with either of these programs in leveraging talent from Skillbridge or from VA Work Study.
Um, while we're s, we're talking about campus, I just want to, I have a couple of questions, but, um, you know, I, I checked with CUNY, by the way, about, uh, their, their, um, their, their veterans people. Like they have, each, each, uh, CUNY campus has a veterans office. However, only one of the units in CUNY doesn't, they're in between, um, supervisors for veterans. But, um, I always said, and I don't know if this, if it still exists, but I taught at CUNY for 40 years. And, um, I wanted to know when a student was thinking about dropping out. Because we, we had a, about a 40% dropout rate, uh, at, at that time. I don't know what it is now, but it was, it was a lot. And also, and I was involved while I was on campus, to make sure that the veterans' office had some evening hours. Because many times, mo, I would say, when we, when we did the research, we found most veterans were evening students, yet they didn't have an advisor, the advisor worked nine to five. So then we had to stagger the hours, like, let's say, 12 to eight. Are you, are you guys working with the CUNY campuses on situations like this? Because I want to know when a, when a veteran drops out. And most of the time, when I did ask the veterans, they dropped out because they couldn't handle, they were working, you know, they were, they had families, and school was just too much for them. So, you know, I tried, we tried to get the, um, the different, various departments to work with the veterans a little bit more, to maybe, um, give them, you know, earn credit from, from, let's say, the Army, because they were experts in this, in this field, they would get additional elective credits. But what, do, do you get notified, or at least you, are you in touch with, uh, the campuses?
We, not at that, not to that degree, not to that degree. So we have a line of communication with, uh, CUNY's Office of Veterans Affairs, or COVA. We have strong lines of communication with, uh, this would be at, and Agatha Fuentes is there. And we have touches with the various counselors at different schools, but not to, to the extent of, you know, let us know if someone is at risk, et cetera. I, I'd say that's true.
We'll, we'll certainly.
You know, you know, here's, well, here's, so here's an idea, I don't know if the, because the campuses do work study, you know, the CUNY offers work study. You work within the college. That's been, that's, that's been the case. Many students, uh, who were struggling financially, we'd offer, they would work 15 hours, whatever it is, 12 to 15 hours a week, but they'd work on campus. If we could organize something through veterans, where they'd work for veteran service organizations, like somebody, that was a VA program, but why not do it through the, through local campuses? You know, to, to offer that. We could, we could look at that, that might be a, a program that each college, or of the, of CUNY at least, would be interested in.
I feel like we're coming full circle to this issue of getting the word out to folks and having people come into the light. You know, just, we always say, it's about one out of every four veterans self-identifies in New York City. And so I'm speaking just with our experience as a VA Work Study Site, where we thought we'd have many, many more people who'd be clamoring to be able to work with us, yet we just don't see as much traction on that, you know, unfortunately. So it's still this issue of doing the outreach to let folks know, so they can take advantage. And so I just want to, I, I'm with you, Mr. Chair, on these things, it's just we got to make sure the audience wants this and is interested, and will come into the light to be a part of it.
Right, right. So let's talk about, I have two more, two more questions, I, I think. You know, I always say that, but then it turns into a few more. But, um, what additional resources or support does DVS need from the city council? You touched upon a little bit, but to better serve veterans' me, mental health needs. Now, you know, I had the idea, and I think you, you, you know, because we have veteran service offices, we, you know, Vicki Palladino and, and my office. Uh, any other council members do the, the, the veteran service, uh, from DVS?
We've done a pop-up in, uh, you know, Councilmember Mamarado's office.
Right.
Also, just to speak of this question, as far as something that's, it's council directly, where I believe that you can, you move the needle. Um, and it's not directly to mental health, but it touches mental health. It is so closely aligned to it, I want to make sure we, we put it out there. You know, we've made, uh, we, we made requests in, uh, April, May, to each of the borough delegations about the idea of funding, having a VSO, a veteran service officer from one of congressionally chartered organizations in each district office at a clip of once per month. So, you know, similar to what you and, and Councilmember, uh, you know, Palladino experienced, to have something like that. And that's something where, between reaching out to each of the borough delegations, and reaching out to the Finance Chair, the Chair Brandon on that, where we've been trying to push that forward, and that's something where it's not directly on mental health, but if I can help you with your benefits, and with your VA, your other things, it's about social determinants of health. Once you come on the radar, other things will open up.
I think we have a real possibility, I think that's, that is a target, to have one, uh, VSO person in, um, in every council office. Uh, which, once a month. I mean, I would like it more, but, you know, you, you got to start small. But, once a month, and, um, you know, we, Vicki started, and I, I followed suit, and now more council members are interested. So I think that's good. And that's a way to, to, I, I, you know, again, reach out, bring, bring, um, DVS to the neighborhoods. You know, bring them right into the council offices, it's 51.
And it's about the relationship, Mr. Chair. In other words, if I have the relationship, then I can open up on so many other things. A lot of folks may have issues they've been dealing with, but not going to come out and just say that. They're going to start and talk with you, you'll be helping them about something, and then it'll come up. And so this is a way for us to be able to, to be able to chop that tree.
And you identified how many, um, uh, additional personnel you would need for that?
For that, for that, it's, it's really about how to make it so that you have enough coverage with this one veteran service officer from, like, an American Legion, from a, a VFW, from a DAV, et cetera, to have that one service officer present at a clip of once per month in that district office. And so that's really reverse engineering it like that, Mr. Chair, so, yeah.
Okay, uh, two, two questions again. Um, what progress has, uh, DVS made in implementing Local Law 38 of 2024, requiring the department to conduct community outreach and engagement on mental health resources for veterans?
I'll start a little bit, let me say a little bit, then I'll pass to J L, because he, he, uh, you know, 38, this is the one that was dealing with a lot of the social media, a lot of the metrics that he came ready for. Another piece is on the webpage, and the mental, in NYC.gov/vetmentalhealth. There's a link you can click if you would like to partner with us on any mental health-related, you know, activity, et cetera, and get that conversation going, where it can take you to the right place to tie in with us. Also, on the contact spot, so if you go to NYC.gov/vets, go to the contact tab, if you can partner with DVS. Mental health is one of those options as well, and I, I pass to J L, yeah.
Yeah, Chair, I won't repeat any of the, the statistics, uh, from our social media outreach, but I will also just include that, um, again, Mission Vet Check reached 55,000, uh, they made 55,000 phone calls. And then on top of that, we participated in over 240, I'm sorry, not 55,000 phone calls, my mistake. Uh, it's 15, 15,000 calls made. Uh, we reached 55,000 people, uh, through, uh, participating in over 249 events. So our, our outreach efforts, both in social media and, uh, physically in person, have, have seen an increase in uptick in how we engage the community.
And that's this fiscal year, just to be.
Yeah. All right. So what progress on, uh, has DVS made in implementing Local Law 39 of 2024? So that, that requires the department to submit an annual report on the provision of mental health services by city agencies to veterans.
So that's a report that's due on December 15th.
So you're, but you've started, I mean.
It's, a lot of it is coordinating with the, with the mayor's office operations, and working with the different agencies that are already doing this type of work.
But you're compiling, you know, okay. Okay, um.
We also, uh, Chair, just, we also included, uh, uh, information on the mental health gaps for veterans in the OCMH Annual Report. Uh, we can follow up with the link to the report, but we just wanted to highlight that, well, we're also actively involved with the, uh, implementation and, and inputs for that report, uh, as it relates to veterans' mental health gaps.
Okay, uh, any, any more questions? Okay, well, thank you, thank you, uh, DVS, for excellent testimony. Once again, we thank you, and, um, I know you'll stay, I don't have to ask you, but you'll stay for the public, uh, testimony. Thank you.
And happy Father's Day too, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, yeah. Thanks so much. I now open the, uh, hearing for the public testimony. I remind, I remind members of the public that this is a formal government proceeding, and that decorum shall be observed at all times. I have to read this, by the way, so. It's not me. Uh, as such, members of the public shall remain silent at all times. The witness table is reserved for people who wish to testify. No video recording or photography is allowed from the witness table. Further, members of the public may not present audio or video recordings as testimony, but may submit transcripts of such recordings to the Sergeant-at-Arms for inclusion in the hearing record. If you wish to speak at today's hearing, please fill out an appearance card, which is this, looks like this. Um, with the Sergeant-at-Arms, uh, in, in the back there, and wait to be recognized. When recognized, you will have three minutes to speak on today's topic. Uh, the topic is promising therapies for veterans' mental health, and, mental and emotional health. If you have a written statement or additional written testimony you wish to submit for the record, please provide a copy of that testimony to the Sergeant-at-Arms. Uh, again, please note that witnesses who are here will testify before those on Zoom. Okay, so witnesses, uh, we're going to have the people who are here testify before we, we go to the Zoom. Uh, I will now call the first panel. All right, we're going to, we're going to change that for a second. We're going to start, because this is an expert witness, um, Dr. Frank Bork is on Zoom, um, and he'll talk about, uh, RTM. Do we have Dr. Bork on?
Yes, I'm, been unmuted as well. I'm here, uh, Congressman Holden, yes.
Hi, Doctor. We hear you loud and cl, we hear you loud and clear.
I've got my three minutes, so I'll make this very simple and, and clear.
Well, I'll give you a little extra time, because you're Dr. Bork, and you, you, uh, you're talking, your ex, your expo, expert testimony in RTM is, is worth hearing, because it's part of, is the topic of this, uh, hearing, so. Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I got something from the heart I need to say as well, before we get going. Um, I drove a cab in graduate school, um, in, in the 70s in Manhattan to get through school. And, uh, I come from a family of veterans. When I, I, I've listened now to the testimony that Commissioner Hendon, uh, gave on the department. And I just need to say, from, uh, the children of vets, and someone who's, has them close to my heart, thank you. What you're doing and, and what you've put together there, Commissioner Hendon, you and your people is magnificent. Forgive me, I, I, that's, that's from my heart. Uh, the RTM, uh, if you look at the therapies that are being offered in New York City now, the evidence-based therapies, as they've been monstrously measured over the last 25 years, reduce, uh, remit PTSD between 20 and 35% of the time. That means that for all of the clients that you're sending for mental health treatment, 60 to 70% of them, up to 80%, finish their treatment still having PTSD. We have a breakthrough treatment called Reconsolidation of Traumatic Memories that is 90% effective at removing the diagnosis and the symptoms. And it's that symptom, it's that simple. Simply said, RTM is currently the most cost-effective, evidence-based treatment for PTSD available in the world. We've not just done this in the research lab, we've put this thing full circle, so that we can train licensed mental health practitioners in three days for $4,000. And we have measured now, um, their success in administering the protocol after they've been trained and certified. And in real life, with real counselors, in real agencies, they're getting a 94% remission of PTSD. That's not our research, that's counselors that we have followed for a year after being trained. And that, uh, has just been submitted for publication. In the last two weeks, those of you who have followed the RTM protocol know that we have bent over backwards in an environment, and our EPP was, uh, the organization that was supposed to approve, um, mental health therapies as evidence-based, was disbanded, uh, seven years ago. We don't have an agency, um, responsible for saying, um, uh, a protocol, a new protocol, uh, i- is acceptable. The VA has maintained their position that the evidence-based treatments that they use, which measure hundreds of, hundreds of studies, at 35 to 40% effective, is all that's necessary. That speaks for itself. The RTM protocol works in real life over 90% of the time, getting rid of nightmares, flashbacks, hypervigilance, social withdrawal, all of the symptoms of PTSD. And now, in the last three weeks, the Walter Reed Study, been running for five years, comparing RTM to exposure therapy, the, the first-line therapy for the VA, uh, on every significant measure, better than exposure therapy. More dropouts with exposure therapy, less effectiveness. All of the symptoms removed better using the RTM than the evidence-based therapy that the VA uses first line. And the conclusion from the Walter Reed study, and I'll read, I'll quote it directly, "In the most recent 224 rigorous PTSD random control comparative study conducted at Walter Reed Military Hospital, the pre-publication analysis delivered to us three weeks ago concluded that," and I quote, "RTM should be a first-line option for the treatment of PTSD." "We need to train therapists across the New York City area in the protocol. Takes three days, costs $4,000. We need to raise the money, organize it, and get it out." "I'm a New York City boy, born in Brooklyn, learned to play baseball in Prospect Park. I got a personal identification, I ran a storefront in Harlem in the sixties." "We got something that works, we have people still committing suicide." "We need to get this out and in use. And I'm more than willing to take questions."
Thanks, Doctor. I'd like you to talk about, because I, you know, you recommended, because we, you know, I told you about individuals that, that the daughter, who was a police officer, committed suicide, and they found their daughter in the house. And that's a traumatic experience. You recommended some doctors in their area. And I was surprised how many doctors were trained on Long Island even, or in Queens. So you've done extensive work already in that area. And they found somebody near their home. And now, I can't tell you the difference in the couple who have, you know, they still, obviously, they miss their daughter. They're, they're still traumatized, but now they can function. Now, you know, they just wanted to give up after witnessing that. So you helped, you know, I reached out to you after our previous hearing, and you helped. So I just want to thank you for that.
I appreciate it, and it's pretty much what we're having to do. I don't know why, the research, I mean, we're talking about now eight published studies. The most prestigious, the RTM protocol was included in the 2019 book, Recommendations for PTSD Treatment by the Goal Standard for Evidentiary Medicine, the International Society for Traumatic Stress Studies. The studies that we've done and published, all our IRBs through Duke, they're high-level, rigorously controlled scientific studies that show a 90%, over 90% remission rate for PTSD. Yet what it's taking, we just completed a report for Governor Perry down in Texas. We sent him all the researches that we're putting together a program in Texas. He said, "Yeah, but I need to see it up close." Over three months, we treated five clients that he had PTSD that he knew successfully. He put forth five, we treated five, they all scientifically measure no longer having PTSD. It's almost taking, how shall I say, firsthand knowledge of someone cured to get this thing out there. Please, 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 look closely at this and the people supporting it across the United States. If you go on our website, it's well detailed. The American Legion took us over the hurdle for four months and published a resolution telling Congress and the VA to put RTM into practice, in the VA and the DOD. This is, it's getting a little grotesque, as far as I'm concerned.
Right.
In terms of making it clear, this damn thing works better than anything else out there.
And the beauty.
And we have a PTSD epidemic.
Right.
COVID has just added to it. Forgive me, but.
No, 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 Doctor, please. I just want you to talk about just one other thing about the treatment. How it's not that expensive, like you mentioned, and it doesn't take a long time before you see results, right? It could be five, five visits.
Three to five sessions with no drugs and no traumatizing elements. The clients have to stay relaxed in order for it to work.
Of course. Okay.
It works because it's not therapy as it's ordinarily done. It's so effective because it's actually neurologically changing the connection in the brain between the causative traumatic memory. Guy's been having a nightmare about his friend dying in his arms in Vietnam, and I can tell you, I've done 50 of them, literally 150 vets, Vietnam vets. That nightmare he's been having for 45, 48 years. Might only be once a month, but when he has it, the next day or two, he's not himself, he can't function. The protocol, three sessions, no drugs, no pain. You say, "Okay, George, tell me again about that horrible situation when your friend died in your arms in Vietnam." The vet starts to talk about it, he gets in about two sentences, and then he starts to stutter, and he goes, "But I said, whoa, 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 wait a minute, Doc. What have you done to me? I haven't been able to talk about this thing for 45 years without getting upset. What's happened to me?" The protocol works unconsciously, based on the memory that's long-term stored in a way that separates it. The memory's still there, it's actually enhanced most of the time. But it no longer promulgates through the amygdala the negative neuro, physiological reactions that go with PTSD.
That's great, thank you, thank you, Doctor. You have a question? Okay, Councilmember Palladino has a question, Doctor.
Good afternoon. I don't mean to sound skeptical, but I am. Because if there's a magic pill out there, boy, oh, boy, there's a whole lot of people who could use dose. I need to know, when you base your numbers on, what is the grandiose number that you take your percentage from? For, for example, have 10,000 people used this method of therapy? And you've got the results that you got 90% off of that 10,000? Is it 1,000 people and you had 100 success rate? I'm just, when you say you're gonna talk them through it.
Yeah, I understand, no, I understand completely. It's, these are our research studies. And in the studies themselves, Counselor, there's 320 subjects that have been treated in controlled situations over the last seven years. But each of those studies, how shall I say, is very scientifically rigorous, so that it's looked at first by an independent review board, we use Duke University, to make sure that all of the people doing the treatment are, in fact, honest and well-healed and scientifically capable of doing what's talked about there. And then those studies are watched by the IRB boards to make sure that clients are treated well and what has been designed in the study is actually done that way. Then that is written up and sent to a journal, a journal in the field. The journal has three experts in the field that's being talked about, in this instance, PTSD. And all three of those journal peer-reviewed experts go across all of the data, all of the statistics, all of the analysis, and validate that it's done properly and that what's being presented is honest and true.
Well, could we set up something here?
That's good rigorous science. And we have eight of those studies up to this point over the last seven years.
Are you the only person qualified to do this? Do you have, how many people out there are there like you? How many other doctors are there like you?
We have 300 counselors certified on the website at the moment.
100, you said, I'm sorry?
And there's 160 of them that we've trained in the Ukraine as well now.
We should set up a center. We should set up an experimental center then, and see who wants to volunteer.
We're working on funding the program. The council is actually working on that.
We should definitely try some experimental.
So, Doctor, we are making progress, so it's been mentioned on a number of hearings. And again, I want to thank you, Doctor, for your work. You know, again, we, this is such a, it's such a program, RTM, I believe in, because I've witnessed the remarkable recovery. And again, it's, it's, it's so inexpensive, the treatment, considering what other treatments cost and how, the length of time, that we have to jump at this. If it works, and obviously, you've proven it works, and I'm, again, I'm a believer. So I've seen it firsthand. So I think we're trying to get the council, and we're trying to get the mayor to fund the program. And I think we're almost there.
Please, please, yes, I really can't say thank you enough to you, Congressman Holden. Please, 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 let's train 300, 400 counselors in New York City. It works in a way that it will, it will spread itself after they see the effects.
Great, thank you, Doctor, for your testimony. We have to go on to the next panel. Dr. Mecca Nelson is the next panel in person. Dr. Sudhir Gadd and Gus Stravula-Lakis, Stravula-Lakis, sorry about that. Okay. Okay, we could start on my left here, okay.
Hello, my name is Dr. Mecca Nelson, also Gold Star spouse of the amazing Sergeant Mario Nelson, who was a Haitian soldier that was killed in Iraq in 2006. And at that time, our daughter was three years old, and now she's 21 and is in college doing amazing work. Thank you. I just want to say thank you to Commissioner and Department of Veterans for doing all the work they've been doing and the support that they have been giving our veterans and also our Gold Star families. I don't speak just on behalf, half of our veterans, but also our Gold Star families, because we also experience so much. It took me 11 years to process the death of my husband, to get out of that space. And the support was not there once he passed away. We are the forgotten demographics once our soldiers are gone. But when you have people like Commissioner Hendon and his team and Jason, they are making a movement to help so many, and I'm happy to be here. Also, I am the founder of the Yoga Method, which is a discipline I created after I lost my late husband that helped me process my trauma, my hurt, my pain, and also with my daughter as well, because we both was going through it. And CEO of Mecca Seed of Wholeness. And with that, we provide self-care, mindfulness, mental health services. And I started doing that work inside home with my daughter and myself. And then I introduced it into the yoga world. And as I introduced it into the yoga world, building my business, becoming a city and state MWBE, minority-owned business, I'm able to do work with, and I have been doing work with NYPD FDNY, Department of Education, providing trauma-informed services, mindfulness, and also with the District Attorney's Office, where I actually have a studio inside the District Attorney's Office, where I provide services for their clients and their staff, and soon be working with the Department of Corrections. So I say, I say that to say this, that the work that I've been doing for so many demographics, and also with the veterans and Gold Star families as well, and widows of NYPD and FDNY, it's been creating a large impact in their lives. It helped me. And I say that my daughter shows so much, and myself shows the evidence of the work that started the work that I've been doing on top of now, and to see my daughter proceeding in life, right? I, I want to say this, because it was hard, and there was a lot of judgment speaking about my late husband. And honestly, there should be no judgment, but there was. But I want to say this, and then I'm gonna speak what I wrote. Our children go through so much when our soldiers pass away. And when they go through it, no one knows the insides of what they're dealing with. My daughter was bullied for not having a father. And inside the school system, which is why I'm happy that Commissioner Hendon went inside the schools to speak and communicate about military families and what they experience. She was bullied so much, it took away her confidence, it took away her self-love. I had to help her build that back up with the work that was being done. And now she's president of her sorority at her university. She's Miss Senior, she was on student government, and she's doing so much more. And I just want to, that's evidence of the work that we have been doing, on top of the work with these city and state organizations. So I want to speak on behalf of our veterans, because I see they do go through so much, they do go through loneliness. And there's times where they don't speak to you, where they are suicidal, and you have to constantly check on them. And that is something that I've been doing, right? Also, what I've noticed is they go through their emotions, and sometimes people that they are working with, or working with them, or judging them, or speaking to them in an incorrect fashion. So communication and the way that these organizations are communicating with our veterans are very important, because that also takes a toll. I personally had a conversation with a veteran that experienced how someone communicated, and he keeps himself busy by volunteering with that particular organization, right? So that's a big thing right there, okay? So the health of veterans is utmost important to one crucial aspect that needs attention, is the medication they receive. Many veterans are currently prescribed multiple medications, which raises concerns about the effectiveness and potential side effects of such treatments. To address these issues, it is essential to provide veterans with more holistic approaches of managing their pain and overall mental health. Implementing in-house programs that incorporate non-pharmaceutical intervention can greatly benefit veterans by integrating these programs into their pain management or comprehensive care plans. Veterans can access a wider range of services and techniques, and their pain and improvement will, and well-being. Our effect, one effective approach to guide veterans towards optimal health outcomes is to use the SMART goals. This is so real, okay? SMART goals, Pacific, measurable, achievable, relevant, and time-bound. By setting SMART goals for veterans, can work towards obtaining the benefits of various services and interventions. These goals provide a clear roadmap for veterans to follow, ensuring they receive the support they need to manage their pain effectively and their mental health. In-house programs can offer a variety of interventions, such as physical therapy, acupuncture, Qi Gong and Tai Chi, somatic movement, and understanding that Qi Gong and Tai Chi is energy work, mindfulness-based stress reduction. These interventions have shown, and also including Chinese medicine, because there's a book called The Body Keeps Score. And with that book, it speaks about how trauma stores in the body. This is why they experience pain, this is why they have all these health issues, because it adds up, and it also accumulates as time go by. These, ensuring they receive the support they need to manage, excuse me, I went off track. These interventions show promising results in managing pain and improving overall health outcomes for veterans. Incorporating these programs into a comprehensive care plan ensures that veterans have access to range of services tailored to their specific needs. These approaches that each veteran, for their pain management and mental health journey, is unique and requires personalized attention. That is not, just like you said, therapy is not for everyone. So therapy was not for me, because I had a therapist that worked with veterans that said, "You people only come when you want something." So therapy is not for everyone. Some individuals need movement, somatic movement, creative movement, in order to, to work on their trauma. In conclusion, prioritizing the health and veterans' requirements, a shift towards offering holistic approaches to manage pain and overall well-being by implementing in-house programs incorporating these interventions and comprehensive care plans, veterans benefit from a wider range, utilizing SMART goals can help obtain a full benefit of these programs, leading to improved health outcome and a better quality of life.
Thank you, Doctor. And we have, we do, by the way, I admire your work, because we do have a lot of Gold Star families that get involved, because they know what was not done for them. And then they fill in the void. So again, it's amazing, your work, and we have to talk, you know, we have to talk more. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Gus Avduralakis. I'm a Navy veteran currently serving as.
Hello, my name is Gus Avduralakis. I'm a Navy veteran currently serving as a medic in the National Guard. I have personal dedication, dedication to veterans' well-being. My background in public health program and building initiatives that support and enhance the lives of our veterans is a mission I've had wholeheartedly committed to. My current role doing research at NYU is not just about preventing opioid overdose amongst veterans. It's about providing peer support, requiring mental, multiple layers of attention. What sets our work apart is, is the foundation of community-based interventions, ensuring that the needs of veterans' voices are heard. Veterans encounter various barriers that can impede their access to necessary resources and support. Some key challenges are the idea, the idea of a deserving veteran. This can lead to certain veterans being overlooked and under, under deserving based on their service history, discharge status, or other factors, such as misconceptions can create barriers to access benefits, support services, and public empathy, which impacts the second point of individuals' gatekeeping services within veterans can prevent, that can prevent veterans from receiving resources or accessing the help that they need. Complex eligibility criteria, extensive paperwork, and bureaucratic processing can, can be daunting and discouraging. This gatekeeping can lead to veterans not receiving timely or appropriate assistance. Insufficient funding for veterans' programs is a significant barrier. Limited financial resources can restrict the ability and quality of support. Funding issues limit the opportunities for new and revolutionary programs that veterans deserve. Addressing these barriers require a constant effort and, and change, precautions. Streamlining access and services secure require, require funding and develop programs that meet veterans' needs holistic and compassionately. Community-based interventions effectively address veterans' complex needs by leveraging the strengths and resources within communities to create sustainable, impactful changes. These interventions address various health and social issues simultaneously. By integrating healthcare, mental health support, social services, education, employment assistance, these interventions can provide comprehensive support tailored to veterans' unique needs. Locating services within the community makes them more accessible to veterans, reducing barriers related to transportation or lack of awareness. This accessibility is crucial for timely, timely and effective support. Community-based programs help build and strengthen social work, providing veterans with the essential peer support. These networks can also emotionally support, excuse me. These networks can support individuals and give them a sense of belonging and provide the mental health support that they will need.
Thank you so much for your testimony.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having me, Mr. Paul and Counsel. My name is Dr. Gad. I'm a, Dr. Sudhir Gad, I'm a psychiatrist. I'm a New Yorker. I'm a veteran, a commander in the US Navy. And three minutes might be enough because I'm gonna be talking about the third element, and that is lithium. Now, we think of lithium as a conductor. It powers our phones. It powers a car here and there. And we also think of it as a significant medication. But it is also salt. It's a metal. It ignited the Big Bang, and it is already present within us. So my field of why I have published on this and the success that I've had, and I'll tell you about that in a second, is based on the understanding of holistic psychiatry, addressing trace minerals, addressing the bridge between illness and wellness. So what have we done with this? And what have I published on? I currently run the number-one addiction treatment center in New York State, as per Oasis. Okay, that is in the Lower East Side. It is not uptown. It is not out east. It is with difficult patients. And so we get those results because we enhance health and we understand causes of addiction. We just don't treat the addiction. We treat what has led to it, and we improve their health overall with the exact mineral that I recommend that I take. I tell my patients this. I say, "Look, man, I do the riding, the eating, the holistic sleep hygiene, but if you take this mineral at the level I'm telling you, you're going to offset the damage done to your brain." So lithium, one to a hundred, let's look at this analogy. At a hundred is bipolar level. That's one hundred actual milligrams of lithium. At one is the amount that you'd get if you were living in Sardinia per day, okay? One milligram. So the Mediterranean and special regions of the world where soil and water are enriched have small amounts of lithium in it. If you move that scale over a little bit to ten, you can prescribe that. It is pennies. And by using it, it is akin to using fluoride to enhance dental health, iodine for thyroid and endocrine health, and IQ, by the way. Areas that are not iodized in their salt, IQ is affected. So I'm the founder of Third Element Water, which is a supplement company that lives on that one-milligram level. And if you look up low-dose lithium, you can find, this is available over the counter. I tell every vet this. Other vets that I treat, by the way, right now, and I'll get back to the, the treatment of it and the scale, but I treat BLAST TBI. You know, we're doing great things. God bless the DVS. They're doing Herculean things, but sometimes it looks Sisyphean. It looks like we're up against the wind uphill because our rates of suicide are actually increasing. So when you treat BLAST TBI specifically, you get an offset of the brain damage from those sound waves. Lithium inhibits GSK3. That is a major anti, that's the aging enzyme. And there's only one inhibitor, and it is only that. So whether we educate doctors, whether we educate our personnel and families to look at this, either get it prescribed or buy it, not from Third Element, but from somewhere else, or whether we set up an experimental clinic. The results are gonna be what they have been, where I continue to do this kind of work and have published on this kind of work. And the last thing I'll mention, and I'll let you all ask questions for all of us, is the concept of inflammation. You know, COVID, we know this concept of cytokine storm. The second paper that I published was on the use of lithium in severe COVID settings. When we added randomized control trial, a small amount of lithium to patients in a hospital, and I had this virus right out of the bat, it was awful. What we got was a turning down of eighteen different cytokines. Every one of them, every time lithium was dosed, turned down. IL-1, 246, 10, interferon, TNF. And by the way, the highest cytokine measured in suicide is IL-6. So there's plenty of data. I've actually sent you all a, you know, a copy, and you have all the references. There's almost two hundred in total. I published a few of those, but I'm happy to write more.
So how many veterans have you treated to date, do you think?
About eight hundred.
Eight hundred?
Yeah.
And success rate?
Well, success is eight hundred out of eight hundred. But that means that everyone is dealing with some degree of improvement, depending on the symptoms and depending on the conditions that they came in with. You know, the entire pie is what matters. If I'm treating dental health, you know, entire lifestyle and the dental hygiene is important, but using fluoride really puts a lot of wind at my back, right? So that's what this does in psychiatry.
Well, thank, thank you all for your testimony, and very interesting panel. And we'll, you know, I, you, please get in touch with my office if you have some, so we can, we can have a meeting on some, some of this, you know, actually this, this treatment because they're all very interesting. We've had a lot of experience at NYU also, and they're doing great work. So thank you all again. Thanks.
Thank you.
Next panel. Dr. Victoria Jonas, Frederick Gassur, and Catherine Trapani. You may start.
How about now?
Yeah.
Good afternoon. I am Dr. Victoria Jonas. I'm a clinical psychologist and assistant professor in the Department of Psychiatry at NYU Langone Health. I'm testifying today on behalf of the Military Family Center at NYU. Our center was established just over eleven years ago to fill a well-documented gap in services available to veterans and their families. The Military Family Center provides free mental health treatment for veterans and their families who are experiencing the long-term effects of all phases of military service. These services include evaluation and treatment for mental health disorders, co-occurring substance use, and the effects of traumatic brain injuries. Since we started, our center has served over four thousand veterans and their family members. We have developed very strong partnerships with the VA, the Department of Veterans Services, and many other organizations in an effort to reach veterans who are ineligible for care elsewhere or who may be disconnected from mental health services. The sheer number of individuals served by our clinic demonstrates the necessity for public-private partnerships to meet the needs of veterans and their families in our community. It's central to the mission of the Military Family Center to decrease barriers to high-quality, evidence-based care for our nation's military families. We offer gold-standard therapeutic treatments for post-traumatic stress disorder, anxiety disorders, depression, and substance use disorders, including prolonged exposure therapy, cognitive processing therapy, and cognitive behavioral therapy. We tailor our treatment to each veteran's unique needs, and we pride ourselves on staying up to date with new and emerging treatments to give our population the very best care available. This includes recent addition of written exposure therapy, which is a short-term, highly-accessible exposure-based treatment for trauma and stress-related disorders. While our center was originally established to meet the needs of the growing number of post-9/11 veterans seeking mental health services, we consistently receive referrals from veterans and family members of all eras who continue to be affected by their military service. And so we extend our resources to meet these needs. We applaud the New York City Council Committee on Veterans for supporting legislation that will establish a Vietnam Veterans Day to ensure these veterans are acknowledged for their work and sacrifices. This acknowledgement can often enhance a sense of meaning in one's life, which we know has a very positive impact on mental health. Additionally, many of those that we serve feel the impact of mental health problems related to their military service across various domains of their lives, including the ability to access safe and affordable housing. And in the field of psychology, we understand that it's imperative that basic needs such as shelter are met before someone is able to heal emotionally. So we support the Fair Access to Co-ops for Veterans Act, which is being discussed today, which aims to improve veterans' access to homeownership in New York City, a place where the cost of living is exceptionally high. Veterans and their family members are seeking mental health services at a higher rate than ever before in the last decade of our operations. This sharp increase in the demand for our services has resulted in struggles to meet the demand and ultimately a waitlist for services across various programs. As previously shared with our committee, we have a waitlist across, sorry, our city council-funded traumatic brain injury program. This program provides much-needed evaluation and rehab services for veterans with traumatic brain injuries, many of whom are also struggling with co-occurring substance use disorders. The funding from the Mental Health Services for Veterans Initiative remains the sole source of funding for our center's TBI program, and we're very grateful for the council's continued support. Our center is equipped to work together with the community to address the ever-growing needs of veterans and their families. We hope the council will further invest in the veteran population, and we urge the council to consider further supplementing citywide capacity to meet the ongoing demand for support services for veterans. Thank you for holding this hearing today and for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you, Doctor. Can you elaborate a little bit on the waiting list? Because that's been a nagging problem, and I hate to see that, you know? Can you, are we doing better than the previous years?
Yeah, it's, we still have a waitlist across several programs, including the TBI program. Pretty much all of our services, there's a waitlist for them. We're working as hard as we can to meet the needs.
But you don't turn them away? Eventually, they're seen?
Yeah, yeah, we, we see folks who are on our waitlist at some point. It can be weeks or sometimes months for folks, depending.
The mental health part of it, when I visit the Board and Avenue Shelter, that's the number-one complaint.
Yeah.
They're not, they're not getting fast enough the mental health treatment. They've waited a long time. So that's, that's what I, I had, I vowed to them that I would work on that and try to get additional funding, so.
Absolutely.
But you have, you have the personnel, you just don't have the funding?
Yeah, I mean, a little bit of both. They had to go hand in hand. You know, we only have so many psychologists and psychiatrists who work in our clinic and who are able to see folks, right? We have a kind of limited capacity of caseload that any one psychologist can see in a week. We do have a short-term model. So we see folks for twelve weeks or so, and so in that way, we try to see as many veterans as we possibly can and their family members. So yeah, we're doing our very best, but more is always appreciated.
But thank you. It's well-known, the work that you do and the clinic. So again, anything I could do, any suggestions, please let me know. Especially about the housing. I've tried to get, you know, veteran housing. So anytime there's affordable housing, I mentioned to the, to the developers that if, I'll support it even more if you put veterans at the front of the line. They, they deserve special consideration. I don't think anybody has disagreed when I bring that up, that veterans earn the right to get to the head of the line or at least get special consideration on housing. Thank you. Thank you, Doctor. Fred?
Chair Holden, thank you very much. My name is Fred Gager. I am a Vietnam veteran. President of Vietnam Veterans of America, Chapter 126, Manhattan, New York. I'm also President of VVA 126 Foundation, New York City, where we focus on veterans' mental health. In the sixties and early seventies, men and women residents of New York City and other cities answered the call of the country to fight in Vietnam to preserve freedom and democracy. They signed up. Others were drafted. They served. They fought. In seventeen hundred and fourteen, New Yorkers gave their last breath of breath of life for the country, along with fifty-eight thousand four hundred and seventy-six others nationally. Many, many others return home, some with seen wounds, but many, many with unseen wounds. They received neither of their country's glory, nor their country's or city's compassion. Veterans left the war, but the war never left the veterans' memories. Months, years, decades went by, and the eternal time bomb, this unseen wound, ticked away until one day it goes off, and that veteran's life is changed forever. Post-traumatic stress, PTSD, affects every veteran in unusual ways. War is an unhealthy, traumatic event that stretches the mental capacities and sanity of all. The insanity of wars, the traumatic experiences of war, has multiplied the ranks of those with unseen wounds since Vietnam. Veterans of all decades need help to readjust, to reset their mental emotions, memories, to feel safe, to feel safe in their environment and lead productive lives. Millions has been spent on the recent migrant program in New York. But what has been done to help our citizens, our residents of New York, our brothers and our sisters, America's veterans? Their mental health and their well-being, what are we doing? Veterans suffer in many ways. Some turn to drugs, alcohol, violence, other addictions, and homelessness. Some just give up. Are we going to abandon these warriors who protected us and stood by on the ramparts of freedom for us? Freedom, freedom is not free. The cost of freedom is extremely high. That is buried in cemeteries across the globe. But what will the city of New York do to help the mental health of the few of the brave American warriors, New York residents, American citizens? The city must help, must help to answer the call of the veterans, our citizens, men and women of all decades who need help to readjust, to cope mentally with the scars of war. Department of Defense, Department of Veterans Affairs, has stated that twenty-two veterans, and this number is not accurate, incidentally, twenty-two veterans per day take their lives. Suicide by veterans is a national epidemic. The pain mentally that these men and women suffer overcomes the rationality of reason for some of these veterans. Suicide, suicide is a permanent solution to what might be a temporary curable problem. I asked the city of New York to hell-stop veteran suicides by supporting the organization. I asked the city of New York to hell-stop veteran suicides by supporting organizations that offer hope and support. TM, Transcillary Meditation, or TM, Recosalization of Traumatic Memories. Homeward Bound Adirondacks is a retreat that's available. Alliance 180, Equine Therapy, and many, many more. These therapies do work, but these organizations need funding so they can reach out to our veterans populace out there. In closing, I'm asking this city council for help to fund organizations and other programs. Assist with these programs and non-drug therapies for our veterans. Vietnam Veterans of America, Chapter 126, Manhattan, VVA 126 Foundation, New York City, Operation Warrior Shield, Help for the Warriors, and many more. Funding is needed. Funding is the key. Funding is what will open the doors to helping the many that need help. Thank you very much.
Thank, thank you, Fred. Thank you very much for your time. By, by the way, we're working on, in the council, and this committee's been working on trying to get member initiatives for each council member. Just like we give, for, for instance, we have a fund that we give immigrants a hundred thousand dollars. Each council member gets a hundred thousand dollars for their district to, to do immigrant services. Guess how much we give to veterans for initiatives? Zero. So that's, you know, your testimony is gonna, is going to resonate, I hope, with many people, especially in leadership. But we need to do something. The mayor needs to do something. We need initiatives for veterans that, that each council member can have for their district. So whether it's twenty-five thousand, fifty thousand, even to, e- even to keep the veteran service organizations going, like yours, to keep it, you know, because many are being sold. Many are, are just, they can't afford to keep up the buildings. So we have so much work to do, but I think if we can work toward getting that, and I'm, I'm getting close, I'm getting closer. So hopefully with your testimony, it will put us over the top. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you so much, Chair. My name is Catherine Chapany. I'm the, oh, I think it's... Can you hear me?
Some of the buttons are, is that, yeah.
Okay, I'm just gonna push it closer. Maybe that'll help.
Light doesn't go on over there, or?
It actually is blinking.
Oh, it's blinking. Got to get some upgrades.
Well, thank you. Appreciate the opportunity. My name is Catherine Chapany. I'm the Assistant Vice President for Public Policy at Volunteers of America Greater New York. We've been around for a hundred and twenty-eight years as an anti-poverty organization, and we serve about over seven hundred and fifty veterans every single year. And so speaking of initiatives, I do want to thank the council for their generous support of the Job Readiness and Employment Services for Vets Initiative. We rely heavily upon that to provide employment opportunities and training for the folks in our care. And as was discussed previously in this hearing, I think, you know, the access to wealth building and economic well-being is really critical to overall well-being as a social determinant of health. So I wanted to remark upon that. We're very grateful for that funding and hope that it continues. And I also want to express my support for your resolution about co-op ownership, because I think similarly, if we can get access into the housing market and that stability, that it really will enhance the, the wellness overall of the population that we're trying to serve. But I do want to speak specifically about mental health. That's why we're here today. And we do offer a range of support services, both in our housing and at our community-based rapid rehousing programs. And there, veterans receive case management and social work support to maintain their wellness. And we also endeavor to insert joy into the lives of our clients to combat the social isolation and improve their overall well-being with offerings like music therapy and community events. We have found that nothing brings people together better than good food and music, and we find that our veterans heartily enjoy the opportunity to break bread and share a meal with one another. And this is really critical to the engagement to get at some of the deeper issues. These kinds of services, these wellness services, this music therapy, these community events are not funded by traditional supportive housing contracts. They are things that we raise money for, either through discretionary dollars with our local council members, the corporate community, and private donors. So I'm here to say that the first generation supportive housing that we operate, which is the oldest contracts, those rates have not been modernized, and it's really incumbent upon us to layer on these additional enrichment services to make sure that the folks that are in our care are not just in an aging building that frankly doesn't look that great, because we don't have the dollars to do the capital improvements and the beautification. They go in their rooms, they close their doors, and they're alone. So I really implore you, and I thank you, I feel like this has been a theme that we've heard throughout, about social isolation and really getting people out, giving us flexibility with those dollars, enhancing the rates, and where we can't do that, cobbling together these disparate funding sources to create a truly fulsome program so that the, the men and women that live with us can enjoy their lives.
Yeah, and it's so important for veterans to, to, to get out and, and certainly, that's why I wanted, the, the VSOs. I want the veteran service organizations to survive, but groups like yours should be fully funded, obviously. Not only, you know, in, in music programs, but the arts, the arts, people don't realize the arts can save you.
Absolutely agree with you.
Because it saved me. It saved my, you know, again, I was nowhere until I, you know, worked in art, and I was, I was told I had talent, and it actually elevated my life. And that's what I think people need to, need to experience, especially veterans.
Yeah, we would love to have you. Come, come to our programs, meet our folks, and, you know, come to.
I thought you were offering me a job. I would.
Well, well, you've got a job. We need you where you sit, sir. But, but, but to come see us and to see the music therapy courses that we've got going, just to, to sort of round out the advocacy that we need to be doing.
I'd love to see, I'd love to see what you do, the work you do, and then we could find ways to, you know, again, more funding and more programs. You know, I visited, there was, there's a farm in Queens that, they have veterans work with the horses. It's amazing. It's, it's just amazing. You see them working. So there's so many great programs out there that need, we need the spotlight on them, so.
Totally agree. And, and my colleagues would get very mad at me if I didn't say what care coordination we need externally. So if you'll indulge me to go over the time, I do want to say that when there are those bigger issues, we do find that when our clients are going to the hospital, that the hospitals don't trust the clinical judgment of our staff onsite, and they often disregard our instructions, that they don't necessarily admit people who we know need to be admitted, or they discharge them either without telling us or without organizing community care. You talked about waitlists. Waitlists are a big problem for community care. ACT teams are wonderful tools, but not if we can't get them for the people that live with us. And again, because the first generation supportive housing, which is, which the vets are mostly in, doesn't have like psychiatrists on our staff and so on, we really rely on ACT and hospitals, and even those with AOT orders, that follow-up care, if they disengage, just isn't there. So care coordination, deference to the onsite staff when making clinical decisions, and then layering all of that programming with these enrichment opportunities that I discussed are really the recipe.
Thank you, Kat. Thank you so much, and we, we'll talk, you know, in a few weeks. Thanks so much. Thank you. Thanks. Next panel? Armando Crescenzi, yeah, Crescenzi, Walter Wells, and Raba Belkebar, Belkebar. Sorry about, you know, mangling the names. Did I call? Did I call Walton? Veteran vendors, welcome. You, you could start. You could start. Just press the button.
How's that?
Good.
Good morning to everybody here in attendance. Thank you, Chairman, and thank you to the Committee on Veteran Affairs. And I want to especially thank and recognize all the other veterans, advocates, and service organizations for coming out today and making sure that New York City veterans are not forgotten. My name's Armando Crescenzi. I am a life member of the DAV, Military Officers Association of America, and the American Legion, where I am now in my third year as post-commander in the Bronx. I have a BA in political science. I have a doctorate in law. I am licensed in New York State as a substance abuse counselor, a peer advocate, and a recovery coach. But my most valuable credential is my DD two fourteen. In two thousand and ten, I founded a nonprofit organization called Put Veterans First. We're a service-disabled veteran, and our mission is to help our fellow veterans build their own small business in street vending on the streets of New York City. So I would just like to say, in keeping with today's topic, helping veterans with their mental health issues, street vending is just as good as a therapy, as the equine therapy, the music therapy, and some of the other therapies that you heard about today. Basically, it's been said that work works. Work works. And that is to say that veterans need, they need the sense of community, they need purpose, and they need a sense of belonging. And just like's been said earlier today, the issues relating to veterans' well-being has to do with their housing. So of course, we support four forty, has to do with their economic stability, and also has to do with their mental well-being. So these are things that are achieved and provided for in the challenge to build a small business as a street vendor. So I'm here today to speak about the challenges that veterans face as street vendors. And I also would like to say, you're losing a great opportunity if you really want to help veterans. This is a way to help veterans, will cost nearly nothing. We're just asking you to recognize the law. All right, so we heard about a lot of great programs here today, and I just would like to speak about the earliest program for New York City veterans ever created, not just the oldest, but probably the best. In nineteen, sorry, in eighteen ninety-six, the New York State Legislature came up with a law to help service-disabled veterans. And that law basically said, if you're a service-disabled vet in New York City, you can street vend without any restrictions, pretty much exempt from all placement restrictions. Now, I would say this is probably like the grandfather of the American with Disabilities Act. This is really, this is like the very first, this is the grandfather of all veterans' programs. And what has happened, what has happened with this great benefit that New York State has given to vets that will really cost nothing? The veteran is not looking for a handout. He's looking for an opportunity to prove to the world he can overcome his disabilities, and he can take care of himself. So what I have seen since I'm street vending is New York City has totally ignored this right, it's a statutory right that was given from New York State to the veterans. Here in the city, the police department and all the city agencies, DCWP, Department of Health, Department of Transportation, Department of Sanitation, it's like they never heard of New York State, all right, and they have no respect for state authority. And I just, since, since the clock is running, I want to sum this up. Directly out of the New York State Constitution is the preemption doctrine. And the preemption doctrine says, if a state law conflicts with the city law, state law shall overrule. And there's no confusion there. It's in thirty-five, it's in thirty-five eight, it's been enshrined in decisions. Kazwan v. Panti, People v. Sands, in two thousand and seven was the last time it was asserted. And what has happened is, New York City feels that it doesn't have to follow New York State authority, and it's outrageous. What's the downside of giving a vet a chance to make a living? There is almost no downside. So it's like, why can't you just embrace the law? This is the preemption doctrine. It gives a great benefit to these veterans. Why can't we just access it? So I have a lot more to say, but I'm gonna leave it right there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We're gonna have a hearing on this, by the way. We promised you we're gonna, we scheduled it. So when, you know, you'll be, you'll have, we're, we're gonna try to solve this in, in, in my tenure as, as a veteran. Sure, I know it's been an ongoing thing even before me. Yeah. I know, but we have, we have to get the city on, again, on the same page as the state, and get them to honor, you know, the law, like you said, and I agree. I agree a hundred percent. All right, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Hey, hi, how are you? My name is Raba. I'm a service-connected.
Nice to see you again.
How are you, Sergeant? It's a pleasure to see you again. All right, and I'm not talking about the majority, but here in New York City, the city council member, they are not a pro-vet. If they are, they will never, I mean, just look at the DVS. The budget is six million dollars. When we talk about the immigrants.
Not even six million. It's not even six million. You're throwing more money at it.
And when we talk about the immigrants, it's four point three billion dollars. DVS, they're doing a great job, but with these couple dollars. Anyway, we are here, but if we're talking about, I'm not going to say it again, because Armando just said about the, our mental issue, whatever, because it's good to take those pills, whatever, but if we need to be occupied too, because taking pills and stays home, that doesn't help us. That's how we commit, most of the, I mean, us committing suicides. So this is what we ask for. These days, since we are here all street vendors, we're trying to make our living, we want to know when the city is going to enforce the rules. Because today's illegal vendors, they have more rights than, than us. I waited ten years to get my license to be in Midtown, but today there is a lot of illegal vendors. The city doesn't want to do anything for that. So we want to know when is, because we the one who's losing, you know, our income. And of course, there is a big problem here. The city is funding an organization that called, uh, Street Vending Project. We just find out, I mean, a couple, and I, I did talk to everybody, we find out their director, Mohammed Ateya, he has a fake license. He's not a vet. How come he has a yellow? Because this is, as a service-connected disabled veteran, they give you either a yellow license or a blue license. Only people with service-connected can get it. We have a proof here. We have everything here that this guy is holding a yellow license and he ever served in armed forces. I, I, I talked to the DCW, I, I talked to everybody. I sent even here, I have all the proof. With the DCW, I asked them how, because to get this license, the blue license, you have to be disabled, and you have, you need a letter, real letter from the Department of Veterans Affairs. So you have to issue that this guy never, I have his name, I have all the proof, that I send everything to the city with his license number and everything, okay? Plus, like we said, sometime we dealing, most of us are dealing with PTSD, whatever. Some people, some disabled veterans, they can't even renew their license. We having tickets. So we are asking last time, Mr. Chairman, he did talk about this. We need an office. We are sixteen hundred veterans vendor. So we need a small office, and I'm going to volunteer at least one day a week for free to fix this problem, to help them. I'm already doing it, to help them to renew their license, to fix their tickets, whatever. Plus, we, we want to say something about, I, I know my time is done. We want something about, the city is targeting only disabled veteran. I have proof. They are here. Everybody has a ticket, him too. They are targeting only disabled veterans. So me, myself, I'm going to commit suicide. They give me sixteen thousand dollars tickets. I wasn't even there. This is what the health department, I wasn't even there. They give me sixteen thousand dollars, and they want to take my permits. So this is what's going on. Given with our experience as street vendors, we believe we have, we have been wrongfully targeted and ticketed by the city. Can the city council, council consider requiring the enforcement agency to create a public report of the violation in the street vending community with identifier like veterans and disabled veterans? We getting more, more ticket. This guy was.
Who's, what agency gave you the ticket?
The Health, Salvation and Health Department. Everybody. We become like the training center for them. This guy, he was on Forty-Fifth Street trying to make, he's a disabled vet.
All right, let him, let him go now.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you everyone for coming. Thank you for letting me have this speech. I'd like to salute you for what you said earlier, because I'm a disabled Vietnam vet, and I've gone through a lot of problems. And I've gone through a lot of problems out there in the mental health. I have to say, when I first came home from Vietnam, two fifty-two wasn't so cool. You know, that was the VA office down here on Seventh Avenue. You come home and it's almost not like being in a welfare center. And they tell you, oh, we can't help you. So I found other ways, you know, even, you know, I'm listening to everybody speak today and the only thing that comes to my mind is trust. You don't want people to get involved with a lot of programs, but we have to learn how to trust you again. Because we never trust, you know, we be disappointed. You know, we had no work, no jobs and everything like this. It's only recently where people say, thank you for serving. I thank you too for saying something earlier that veterans should be put ahead, put ahead of the line and stuff like that. They should look at us different. We should be, I should become a second, second-class citizen again in my own country. I got hurt while I was in Vietnam, I got hurt there. I found things to do in order to deal with my PTSD, such as the Get Straight Program with, with kids when I was up, when I was locked up. And I enjoy that. I enjoy my community, I enjoy Times Square because everybody know me. McCarthy, who's our role president, I mean, role, security officer, you know. I just find things other than do. Because I don't want to be back on no hell door or Dorzine and stuff like that, because they didn't know how to deal with veterans when we came home. So even when I was locked up, you know, walking around like I'm a zombie, you know? So God is good, I pray and everything, but, you know, as a PTSD person, you know, I, I go through things, you know, I, I still dream, I, I can still, I can still remember and, and tell you exactly what's in Phu Bai in Vietnam. You understand? I could show you the ditch over there and all that stuff. When I talk to other veterans from, from, from being with the Hundred and First Airborne Division, we, you know, it's not gonna leave my mind, because sometime when I go to sleep, I have, I have to deal with that. You know, I tried to hurt myself before because I couldn't deal with it. We got a lot of brothers that's being penalized and going through trouble because we want to work. We want to support ourself. But when we go through trials and tribulations like this, you know, with the tickets and, you know. He helped me out the last week. I mean, with the judge, he gave me some paperwork, I showed the judge, Judge Brown. And she was real glad, she said, I'm, thank you, somebody finally came to the court, you know, prepared. I got the case dismissed, but why should I have to go through that? If the officer doesn't know their job, agencies don't know their job, come on, somebody try to.
We're, we're gonna solve this. The last thing we do, we're gonna solve this, because these agencies shouldn't be descending on you and they shouldn't follow the law. So we, we're gonna try to fix that. If it takes everybody, if we get everybody in a room, we'll, we'll fix it. We're gonna have a future hearing, so, but thank you all. Thank you for your, your service and then thank you for your testimony. Thanks, Walter, thanks. Yeah, thank you. They're gonna, they're gonna tell you you can't. Next panel, Joseph Hunt, Abdel Jamil, and CEO Kool Lee. And then we have one person on Zoom after this panel. Joe, do you want to start?
Sure, thank you. My name's.
Press the button.
Press the button.
Yeah. It's not working?
I'm colored in shades of red and green. Great, my name's Joe Hunt, I'm a US Army Vietnam veteran. And I currently serve as the Director of the Veterans Middle. I'm sorry, it's my old job, the New York Outdoor RX Coalition. Thank you, Chairhold, and members of the Committee on Veterans for the opportunity to offer testimony regarding promising therapies for veterans' mental and emotional health. I'm here today to highlight the vital role of the New York Outdoor RX Coalition in improving access to the healing powers of nature for our service members, veterans, and their families. Although I have to say, I think I'm preaching to the choir. Three of the, or a third of the, the programs that you listed in your briefing sheet are outdoor programs. So I'll keep it short. More, more details and links to research and other information are available on my document, testimony document. The New York Outdoor RX Coalition is a result of four years of collaborative work with the Sierra Club Military Outdoors and the New York State Department of Veteran Services. The coalition is made up of over a hundred and fifty unique public and private organizations across fifty-four of New York State's sixty-two counties. Coalition members are dedicated to improving access to outdoor activities for veterans and building awareness that nature offers a unique and effective way to mental and physical health. As the committee knows, transitioning from military service to civilian life is often fraught with challenges. Veterans may carry invisible scars of their service, and these, these injuries can be as debilitating as physical wounds, complicating their adjustment to civilian life. Research reports, supports, spending time in nature has been able to show, demonstrate that it alleviates symptoms of depression and post-traumatic stress, increases personal growth, and most importantly, I think, fosters a positive attitude toward seeking professional help. Outdoor recreation is also a lower barrier, has also a lower barrier to entry to clinical treatments by reducing stigma and offering a variety of activities that resonate with veterans, particularly those veterans who want help but fear the stigma associated with traditional treatment. On April first of this year, the New York State Legislature expanded the Lifetime Liberty Pass program, affording veterans and Gold Star families free access to New York State's public lands and waters. This expansion is a significant milestone in improving access to the outdoors. But despite these benefits, New York City's veterans, roughly sixteen percent of the state's veteran population, face barriers to accessing nature, such as distance, lack of transportation, and unawareness of outdoor resources. These barriers inhibit efforts to make the outdoors more accessible to them. We urge the committee and DVS to continue to support initiatives that increase access to the outdoors for veterans by investing in transportation, outreach, and education to ensure that more New York City veterans benefit from the physical and emotional healing powers of nature. Thank you for your time. New York's Outdoor RX Coalition is available to the council's convenience to assist in efforts to support the well-being of our veteran community.
Thank you, Joseph, thank you. Next.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Abdel Jamila, I'm a US Army retired. And I'm a war veteran, Iraq War Veterans with Combat Distangishing Device Valor. I was in combat. I lost friend in a battlefield, I lost my captain in a battlefield in Fallujah, and I lost another barrel body in a Chinook helicopter. My name is, my name is Abdel Jamila, and I'm US, United States Army retired and Iraq War Veterans with Arkham Distangishing Device Valor. I'm a New York City street vendor, and I just want to add to the, what Rabah was saying, and then Mr. Wales and Armando, that in New York City, we've been a little bit like, you know, undermined and discredit, and then the city, the city council is lately is trying to kind of like destroy the veterans' community in New York City, especially the street vendors. And we want to work in the city with dignity and honors everywhere. We have family to feed, and we are obligated by the law called thirty-five A. Of, it's like our Bill of Rights. So some of the city council members, they, they, they just prefer illegal migrant vendors to like New York City veterans, disabled veterans, street vendors. So I know, I know, a lot of us served honorably in the United States of the, in the United States of America. And we will, we will always want the NYPD to come back and enforce the law in the city. So basically, that's our comfort. Every time there is an NYPD, we feel comfortable. There is a lot in intimidation in the streets, especially if you go and early morning, and then you have like a bunch of like, you know, clown, you know, sitting there and they want to like intimidate you and fight you. And then we don't want that, because as a, as a PTSD sufferer, I suffer from PTSD and then, and I suffer from from TBI also. So I don't want to go through that, through that commotion early in the morning because that's will trigger all my PTSD symptoms. And then that's why we want the, the city council to kind of like, you know, try to get the NYPD back into the city, to the, to the enforcement things. And we, we are a vendor licensee. And then by enforcing street vendor law by the NYPD, only, it means only the NYPD can do the job. The city council was very short-sighted, thinking about the ramification, the damage they have done to the disabled veteran, street vendor licenses in the last four years. So I think they, they create a pub, public safety crisis that we need to be, that it needs to be dealt with. There is a street vendor project who are taking care now of, who are trying to speaking about the disabled veterans. But the street vendor projects are like, they are different than, than us. We are disabled veterans, vendors, and they are just vendors. Some of them are legal and some of them are illegal, I'm not saying. But then we, we just created an organization called Disabled Veterans of New York. And it's a nonprofit organization with the help of the, the, the VC, the, yeah, the VCS and Jason and all that. And then it's nonprofits, and we want to work through, through, through our organization so we can get some helps. And then that's it, thank you very much.
Yeah, we're gonna try to do that, but thank, thanks for your testimony, all right.
My name is Sir Kelly, I'm a Texas veteran. The first time I'm here, joined many times before, and the first time speak, because I got summer, I got first summer twenty-five years. And the reason is, I want to know how your situation. It's simple, okay? This picture here, it's all illegal vendor, ice cream, and hot dog vendor behind there. The pole side hot dog vendor, all illegal. It could have been a long time, since after pandemic. Now the NYPD, they don't do anything, the, you know, the sanitation police, they do that. In Hollywood, it's my case. So the June five o'clock PM, the agents come over your car, the blocking the ice cream truck, and the hot dog vendor, hello, they move, they can't do anything. Usually the police, they do that, they stop the hot dog vendor, give summer, right? Sanitation police come, they look, and then they stay forty minutes, they come to us. We got come to four times for three weeks, and then, oh, you got to oversize. And they give five officers come down around table. I sit down there, hey, what are you doing, man? What the illegal vendor, look at the people, come on. Hot dog vendor, you doing the anything? Hot dog vendor move, next stop, people say, come back here, talk to the returner. How many time you coming tomorrow? They drop, doing, I got a ticket in, what's my P L A? What the hell of this? Like you do, I like Chinese, I'm not Chinese, but you know, illegal people, come on, I was hurt there. They take forty minutes, ticket on it, and then another people look at there, what's going on, I'm a criminal person. And then they say, thank your service, shake your hand. After that, I washed my hands three times. They said, thank your service, and they said, only twenty-five dollar ticket. And the next time, you got to oversize, we're confiscating your merchandise, through to me. You know what? Yeah, you driving in New York City twenty-five miles, right? Sometimes twenty-seven miles, right? You know, but they don't do that, right? And oh, you got over twenty-five mile, a little oversize, they don't spend anything, right? They does, how about other people, why don't do that, hot dog vendor, we do that someday. That's terrible. Sanitation police officer, how come they come to us, we not, we not criminal, we stay there. Everybody move, next time they come, I move my head out, I don't show my ID, I got no ID. Okay, go home, they say, okay, pick it, go home, I do that.
Yeah, this is, yeah, this is exactly the problem, yeah.
Yeah, I ask them, how about other people?
How much was that ticket for?
They say, I purchased it twenty, only twenty-five dollars. But next time, confiscating merchandise, next day, I got free hospital doctor, the venture doctor, I spoke to the story about. I cannot work after I get mad, I'm so angry. I was PTSD for a long time.
Right.
Doctor gave me one additional medicine.
Veterans shouldn't be going through this.
I don't know, sanitation police officer.
This is outrageous, you're absolutely right.
You gotta talk to sanitation on the commission, whatever. I'm sorry to hear my bad language, all right?
Thanks for your testimony, again, I'm sorry this is happening, but.
And I'm so angry, I'm out there, you know. I'm three K every night after that, I didn't work.
It's disgraceful, and I agree with you guys, and, you know, we're gonna try to fix it, but it's, the street, the street vending is, has actually gotten a lot worse because of just, we can't get, even in my district, I have illegal street vendors. I can't, I can't get the city to really enforce it. It's, it's a very difficult situation. So we really got to get the mayor together and everybody else to, to sit down at the table, but.
How we have a target on it?
I know, I know.
We want a fair, there's so many illegal, I don't target.
Again, we're gonna have to really sit down, I'm gonna have to sit down with the street vendor, the veteran street vendors, come up with a strategy, and, and let's meet with the people that can solve this, and, and let's do it once and for all. So we're gonna do it in the coming months, but I get, again, I thank you guys for coming and testifying. Thanks so much.
Thanks so much, I can go tonight.
All right, we have two people testifying, Roger Walker on Zoom.
Starting time?
Yes, hello, good afternoon.
Hi, Roger, we hear you.
Okay, great. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you today, Chairman Holden and members of the Veterans Committee. And my name is Roger Walker, I'm the Program Director at Samaritan Daytop Village's Ed Thompson Veterans Program. It's located in Richmond Hill, Queens. The program is a trauma-informed place where veterans can heal from substance abuse, mental health disorders, and other life issues. You know, this work for me is both personal and professional. As a veteran myself, I'm a US Navy veteran, I've had the honor to work with veterans for the last nineteen years in different capacities, most in helping them work through life's difficulties. I would like to especially thank Chairman Holden for visiting our Ed Thompson Veterans Facility in February, and Councilmember Eric Bacher for visiting our Forty-Third Street site, where we opened a brand-new wellness and recovery room. You know, we're able to provide quality services to veterans in a residential setting over a period of time of about a year. And, you know, the support from the Veterans Council has been invaluable. So, and we're always looking for new ways to work with veterans. Currently, we're using treatments like art therapy, equine therapy, and other evidence-based practices to help veterans through symptomology of PTSD and substance abuse. And, you know, and we're a, well, a nationally recognized human service organization that has a continuum of care from residential treatment to outpatient programs, transitional housing, and all these things designed to help veterans regain their lives and, and return to the community as productive individuals. So over thirty, and just a little bit about Samaritan Village Veterans Programs. Over thirty years ago, Samaritan Village identified a population of veterans whose special clinical needs were not being met within existing programs. They often had PTSD and histories of prior. whose special clinical needs were not being met within existing programs. They often had PTSD and histories of prior treatment failures. Most treatment options available during that era focused exclusively on either substance abuse or mental health aspects of the veteran's problems. Clinicians in mental health settings often felt that they could not conduct meaningful therapeutic work with veterans. The subsequent progression of.
Thank you. Your time has expired.
Would exacerbate their mental health problems and make life lasting recovery less likely. So what we've been able to do at Samaritan Village, in a nutshell, is give veterans the time they need to address the problems that they're facing. Many of these problems can be addressed, but usually people are afforded twenty-eight days, maybe ninety days. Here at Samaritan, we can offer them up to a year in treatment, and it's something that really works. And I wanna thank the council again, because earlier today, we heard of different treatments such as RTM. Uh, we're always looking for new and innovative ways to help work with our veterans. Again, thank you for giving Samaritan Daytop Village this opportunity to speak to the Veterans Committee, and I hope everyone has a good day.
Thanks, Mr. Walker. I thank you again for all the work that you do with Samaritan Village. It's great programs, and again, up to a year, that, that's, that's magnificent. Thanks again.
Thank you.
And our final witness, Brendan Gibbons.
Starting time.
Good afternoon, council member, other council members. I would like to say first of all, thank you to you, Councilman Holden. I'm very lucky to have you as my local councilman. I just want to say that thank you for everything you're doing for veterans, not only for the community, but everything for veterans and how you're fighting for us. As a commander of a VFW post within your district, it's, I've been the commander now for over ten years. As you know, you've seen most of the VFWs, American Legions, all different organizations unfortunately dwindling down throughout the city, not just in, in Masbit and Middle Village area. But I appreciate everything you're doing. I hope that the city council does listen to what you're trying to get. I hope that you can find funding for other veteran-serving organizations, and I know, most importantly, today, uh, we're talking a lot about PTSD, different treatments, and trying to find funding. I hope that anything I can do, I'm glad that I was able to get on here today and at least speak for a minute, but most importantly, I would like to say thank you to you, the city council members that were here today, uh, also for everyone else that showed up on behalf of all the veterans within New York City. Unfortunately, we are always left behind in most cases, and as we see, uh, most people, they'll give funding to everybody but the veterans, people who should one hundred percent be getting some, at least not scraps that are left over. So I also like to thank Commissioner Hendon and all the staff at New York City Department of Veteran Services for everything that they do. Thank you.
And Brendan, thanks for the kind words, but I really have to thank you. You're, you're always, everywhere that veterans are having a function, you're there, you're out in front, but you're always testifying, and I appreciate that, because just taking this time can help put us over the top, certainly with DVS funding, or certainly for veteran, or veteran service organization funding, which you are a big part of in, in my district and throughout the city. So again, thank you for doing all the work that you do, night and day. He has a family, but he's, he still manages to find time for veterans' work. So thanks so much, Brendan, and thanks for.
Thank you.
You know, thanks for waiting. Thanks for waiting to testify. And last call for Michael Morena. Michael Morena? Do we have? Okay, anybody else wanted to testify? You could sign up. Last call. Okay, well, then I'm gonna adjourn this. Great, by the way, it's been a great hearing. I, I think we learned a lot on certainly some of the vet, veterans treatment for post-traumatic stress disorder. And certainly, again, I will address the, the vendors, the street, veteran street vendors. We have a lot of work to do in that, and we'll, we'll get to, we'll get to that. It's just, you know, it is a nagging problem, and I know it's only gotten worse over the last few months. I realize that, as we see the city. But again, thanks, everyone, and this hearing's adjourned.